To order Monday, October nineteenth, twenty fifteen Richmond City School Board Meeting. Madam Clerk.
Will the board members who are present please respond? Mr. Sturtevant?
Here.
Ms. Gray?
Here.
Mr. Bourne?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Present.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Present.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Here.
Mrs. Larson? Mr. Coleman?
Here.
You have a quorum, Mr. Chair. The next item on the agenda is one point zero three, the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Okay, we're gonna have Ms. Mrs. Mohammed lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During our moment of silence, we'll remember a great Richmond citizen, Alyssa Raisin. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk.
The next item is one point zero four, the adoption of the agenda, and I do have several changes. We're going to move item four point zero one, which is receive a presentation on the RPD, RPS Life Program to follow the recognition of the JROTC cadets. Following that, we will have a, an update on the John Marshall Glenn Allen from Mr. Bourne. Also, we need to receive for action budget transfers, receive for action a certificate recognizing school by safety week, remove the salary study, and under your minutes add another set, and those would be October fifth, two thousand fifteen.
Okay, you also, the presentation by Dr. Bedden on eleven.
Thank you, yes, that's going to be right, the first item under academic improvement. Those are all the amendments I have, Mr. Chair, are there any others?
Hmm? Is there a motion?
Some moves.
The motion was made by Mr. Bourne, seconded by Mr. Sturtevant, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, any extensions? The agenda has been adopted as amended. The next item is item two, recognitions. Two point zero one, the JROTC cadets Colonel Thornton.
Mr. Chairman and school board members, we appreciate your allowing our cadets to come before you. Just before I bring the man, I just want to tell you that this was the twenty-second iteration, and we hosted all twenty, over the last twenty-two years. And so we have something like forty-five schools from not just Virginia, but also from Delaware and North Carolina and Northern Virginia and Maryland. And our cadets did very well, it was a total of, as I mentioned before, right, right around six hundred. We had had a good ratio of adults to cadets, about a hundred cadre for the six hundred cadets. COT.
Detail, attention, forward, march.
COT.
Detail, attention.
I am.
About, face. I am an Army Junior ROTC Cadet.
I will serve my country, my country, my people.
So, oui?
I am loyal, precious, today. I am the future of the United States of America. I do not lie to yourself. And will always be a compromise indeed. I will always practice the citizens' convention. I will work hard to improve my nation, my bay. I will see the message of justice through the world, across the world. Many, others, my friends.
Ho.
Ho.
Right.
About face.
About, face.
Parade. Let me just call off the names and tell you at what level your students and also daughters and sons participated. First from Armstrong High School, we have Deshawn Edwards. He was in the top one percent out of those six hundred cadets. He was, he was deemed a master cadet. Give it up, let's go. Super. Next is Karah Lee from Franklin, who was also a master cadet at the four percent level, four percent. Next, Karah Chase, distinguished cadet in the top six percent. Joanne Roy, also six percent distinguished cadet. Dejana Clark, had did something special in, in the company, so we recognize her with a special recognition. From Huguenot, we have J. O. S. Tally, a master cadet at the top four percent. From June Marshall, Destiny Harley, special recognition. Also, Marshall Shatira Holmes, top nine percent honor cadet. Another honor cadet at, at the top nine percent, Solando Wood, from Wiff, George Wiff. And last but not least, Michelle Charity, also from George Wiff, top four percent. And now the COT herself, Justin Cruz, honor cadet, top nine percent. So, yeah, COT.
Detail, attention, right.
As you were.
Left, face.
As you were, about face. I'm getting to, give him another left face.
Left, face. Right, face, forward, march.
Can we please have all of our parents stand, please, the parents of these young people? Come on, y'all, let's give it up for these wonderful kids. Thank you all so much for being here tonight, and this is some of RPS finest, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to recognize them tonight. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair, before we continue, is there anyone here who needs interpretive services? The next item is to receive a presentation on the RPD, RPS Life Program.
Board members and community members from the city of Richmond, there has been a multiple-pronged effort that we have dubbed Richmond's Intervention and Diversion Efforts. What it is, is a collaboration and partnership with Richmond Public Schools, the Office of Student Services, the FACE Office, which is Family and Community Engagement, and the Safety and Security Office, along with Richmond City Police Department and their school resource staff. The multiple efforts and the partnership are multi-pronged, intended to do and make an effort to decrease our dropout, increase attendance, decrease behavior problems in schools, to increase our graduation rate, to decrease crimes, including gang involvement, to increase our workforce, and to decrease school-based arrests and out-of-school suspensions. During this process, we made some changes to certain existing programs, and then also are starting some new programs in our practices. The first update was done, as you all approved, was the Student Code of Ethics to the Student Code of Responsibilities and Ethics Score. We moved away from zero tolerance, we implemented progressive tiered approach intervention slash discipline. We have efforts to clearly define our administrative practices versus our police actions in the score, and that was in collaboration with the leadership of the Richmond Police Department. And then we have a system-wide secondary in-school suspension resources that are allocated to every school this year, and also standardized procedures, as another effort to keep students in school for minor offenses. The next tiered effort was the implementation of the new school program called Aspire Academy that the board approved as part of the Academic Improvement Plan. It was about a change in academic setting and environment for those students who weren't being successful in a traditional school environment. It offers a non-traditional day, so that it's a shortened day that allows students to also work and do other things that they may need to do to be successful. It's meant to be a different and another opportunity for our overage and unaccredited students, so they just don't give up. Tonight, you will have the third leg of this multi-tiered effort that was being worked on and led by the Richmond Police Department and our trusty new chief and his trusty staff. At this time, I'd like to introduce you, our new chief of police, well, he's not new now, you've been here a while now, and Major Drew, to come forward and introduce you to the LIFE Program.
Thank you, Dr. Bedden, chairman, members of the board. In late May, early June, as you know, in the spring, a report came out about schools nationwide being the prison, the pipeline. Looking at the reports, Richmond fared pretty high up there in the nation. Immediately had a conversation with Dr. Bedden, we brought our teams together and just talking about how do we do, how do we reduce the number of our youth who are in school being introduced to the criminal justice, juvenile justice system? With that being said, went back and looked at the numbers. Last year, we, the Richmond Police Department, arrested a hundred and forty-nine of our youth, our kids, and introduced them to that juvenile justice system. With that being said, breaking it down, fifty-nine of those arrests were for disorderly conduct charges. What is disorderly conduct charges? Not sitting down in classroom, using the profanity towards teachers. And I found that, along with Dr. Bedden, we found that unacceptable. One of the things that we sat down as a group working in collaboration and partnership was talking about this program we want to do called LIFE, Law Enforcement Intervention Focusing on Education. What's different here, most of the time if you arrested, if we arrested juvenile, they go through the court system, and then they're put in a diversion program. This is totally opposite, we're flipping the script, if you will, on how we're gonna deal with our youth. There are certain categories of offenses that we will not be making initial arrests and charges. What we want to do is divert before we place charges. I think that this is doable, right now, it started just with Richmond Public Schools and the police, but right now, we have a meeting this week with other partners, both public and private, Social Services, Richmond Behavior Health, Social Services, Justice Service, and another myriad of partners. I think this is important, I think that we can be a model for the nation. Right now, we're on fast pace, we have a few, you'll see this presentation, it's just a couple of, it's a draft. We're looking to hopefully implement this program right after the holiday season, when kids are coming back in school. I have tasked Deputy Chief Drew as the program manager, and he'll provide you further information, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board, I'd like to go through this presentation, I won't take up a lot of your time, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to address them. But as the chief said, we took a look at what we arrested juveniles for, and we split that down into two categories. As we look at these charges, remembering always that officer discretion is going to be a factor in determining, so the level of, of the interaction, but, but I don't want to just, just give up on officer discretion, that's still gonna be present. But as you see on the left-hand side, there are basic seven charges that we know we're gonna have to make arrests on. Some of these charges are felonies that occur on school and school grounds, gang-related assaults, assaults on officers or faculty, weapons with the intent to threaten, sexual assault and pulling of firearms. Everything on the right side, in the right column there, not arrest, those are ones that we think that we can change and address behavior that will stop, just like the chief was talking about, that will prevent individuals who don't necessarily have to be involved in the, in the juvenile process, we think we can create a different angle to address that. We try to do that a lot with our summer programs, interaction with youth, we think we can do the same thing with partnering with schools and, and achieve some of the things that Dr. Bedden was talking about in, in the, the big picture, what we're trying to, to address. Our next slide talks a little bit about the program, it'll occur one day a week, over nine weeks. Class will run three thirty to five, so it gives us about an hour and a half to interact with the students. This will be after school, and we'll work with schools to transport the kids to the locations we're gonna have these classes at, but one day a week for an hour and a half. We, we met and selected one school on north of the river and one school south of the river, and we believe that we can facilitate about twenty students in those sessions, and our age range will be from thirteen to nineteen. Now, there still has to be some teeth, and we'll talk a little bit as we go through who all has to be on board for this to take place. But if participation is refused and the program's not completed, then those charges can be brought back. Much like in the adult, in the adult system, if an individual doesn't follow the rules of the court, they can be brought back and those charges or those fines be imposed. Same thing here with the juvenile, on those, some of those lesser offenses, simple assault, disorder, like the chief talked about. If they don't complete the whole program, the juvenile system, court system is willing to work with us to then bring those charges back. So this is, it's getting buy-in from the student, the school, the SRO officer in school, and, and the, the parent as well. The programs, the students will refer to the program by the school administration, school security, parents, and the SROs that interact with these kids every day. Referrals will be scrutinized by the police department and school system, designate, so they both looking at the same, same individual and collaborate on, on this individual, somebody that we believe we can address and help in our program. We'll, we'll deal with the school's FACE program to transport kids from, from area schools to the two schools, north and south of the river, and the SRO will facilitate this program being put on. We'll also bring in guest teachers to help us, Attorney General's Office, you'll see up here a list of people that have already jumped on, Social Services, the Health Department, who will assist us in teaching these classes, talking to kids about better choices, consequences, how to get out of gangs, and how to have respect for themselves and for others. We'll seek to obtain alternative types of funding that will help us assist in some of the programs that we want to talk about. This is basically the curriculum, we looked at some other departments around the country, Houston, Texas has an excellent program, but like the chief said, there's this diversion, once a child's been arrested, the court uses the police department as a way to divert instead of going forward with sentencing. What we're gonna try to do is intervene before we ever get a juvenile in, introduced into the juvenile system. So we'll have a basic introduction, exposure to the police department, what we're trying to do, an assessment before that child ever even starts that program, and then we basically have nine weeks. Respect for self and others, conflict resolution, social media, we know that causes a lot of our issues in schools that spill over into the neighborhoods on the weekends, or vice versa. Team building, we're gonna ask the parents to play a key role in this, and in week five, we're gonna bring the parents in again, just like in week one, so they can work with the students, see what we're trying to do together. Drug and alcohol awareness, conflict resolution, gangs, the dangers, how to get out of that. And then week nine, kind of reflections and graduations. We've heard a lot of success stories from other departments that have used this, and we kind of tweaked, we worked with schools to set up that curriculum and flow that way for that very, very response to get students to understand that there's more, there's better choices and decisions. Classes will run every three months, selections will be made from the referrals. We've already started working on a memorandum of agreement that will be signed by the school, the police department, the student, and the parent. That was one thing that Chief Durham imposed on us right away, that the parents must play a role in making this, this process work. Selections will be based off of behavior, accumulated list of those non-arrestable offenses, those individuals that we believe we can interact with and change behavior. And two to three charges are two of those in the, in the same month timeframe. Juvenile showing a pattern of headed toward arrest, these are the individuals that we want to address quickly. Parent involvement, again, we talked about that is key, we want them to interact in this nine-week session. They'll be invited and asked to attend week one, week five, and week nine. We believe that, and Chief Durham has talked over and over and over, that, that juvenile issues that we deal with, that the parents and, and family have to be involved, so we wanted that to be a key element. Dr. Bedden immediately signed on to that, and that's something that we put into place to interact students, police, school, and parents together. Some of the partners already, now, again, like Chief Durham said, this is a draft, I know he and Dr. Bedden both have been out beating the bushes, and I believe there's a lot more of, of agencies that are signing on, but already, when we first started, immediately we had, of course, the police department, public schools, the Attorney General's Office to help with gang awareness, Dr. Caldwell with Heroes and Dreams, that's a mentoring program that we can put in place to follow these kids through and, and encourage them and keep them motivated. Medical Information, the medical facilities, fitness and wellness, come with Attorney's Office or Juvenile Division, they'll also come and, and instruct and, and help the SROs teach these classes. We'll identify types of reward for the students, whether it's gift cards, movies, events, stores and malls, and we can discuss food and refreshments, but we want it, we want it to be something that they get something out of, that they feel like they've achieved something, so like Dr. Bedden talked about, with increasing grades, school participation, decrease of that negative behavior, and then we're gonna reward them, encourage them. The, the police department, these are kids that we will follow and sponsor in, in different programs that we have, our PAL Summer Programs, but we believe that with this can make a big difference, just having interactions with kids, as we see across our country. Community policing at its root has got to interact with community and kids, they have a lot to say, they have a lot of great ideas, and we believe that this will, will work together to address behavior and strengthen bond between students, schools, and the police department. Our goals and objectives, we've kind of already touched on that, to intervene in juveniles' lives and addressing their behavior, this could, before they're introduced to the juvenile system, to build relationships between juveniles and the police department, to change behavior and increase educational performance, and promote social behaviors. We'll monitor these students after they complete the program, measuring their success and overall effectiveness. We'd like to see this expand in years out, that we could have this in every school, and to start out with one school north of the river and one school south of the river. What we still need to do is each agency agree to establish, to work with us and move forward. Most of these things have been done, the forms have been created, we just need to get embedded by both, both attorneys, address and funding and scheduling their start dates, Chief Durham's already pretty much told us when our state, start date's gonna be, and get info to the parents and students, media and the courts, to make sure that everybody understands ahead of time what we're trying to do, why we're trying to do it, and build this collaborative and all these partners working together, again, to address juvenile behavior and reduce the number of juveniles that don't necessarily have to be brought into the juvenile system to address some of the issues that they face.
I do want to highlight the, the second bullet from the bottom. We haven't figured it all out, but at the end of the day, the chief's, you know, approach is, this has to be done, we believe it has to be done. So, at the end of the day, I do want to publicly thank the SROs and our FACE staff, who have just pretty much said, we're gonna figure it out and do what we can to try to make this work, but going forward, we gotta try to build a sustainable model. Because we're all scratching and pulling pennies from different pots of money, trying to figure, make this work, or having to change possibly staff member's schedules or extended work hours to try to make it work and get it off the ground. So, we, we welcome the board's support, the judges have had a presentation on this, and I guess at some point, the council will hear about it also, and hopefully, we'll get off on a good start and then have a, build a sustainable model that makes a difference. But right now, it's all hands on deck, just kind of pitching in and trying to make this thing go and get it going. It's been a lot of years of talking about stuff, and it's kind of like, we just gotta do it, and figure it out as we go and build a bridge while we're walking across it. But, you know, that big Armstrong incident last year, if you recall, was kind of the straw that broke the camel's back, that we can't keep doing what we're doing. So those events, and then the Marshall thing happened, were kind of the things that said, you know, the spire's gotta get off the ground, the LIFE Program's gotta get off the ground, because we can't keep having these behaviors that we're having. And some of it's just, we need to get to kids beforehand, the spire's about giving kids a different setting and an environment also.
I would just like to say to the board, I would be remiss, again, eight months as the chief here, and the relationship and partnership between public, Richmond Public Schools and the Richmond Police Department, just unprecedented. I mean, anytime we pick up the phone, they're there for us and vice versa, so I, I think, I know this is doable. The most important component is, is Deputy Chief Drew had stated, you gotta get the parents involved, that's the critical thing. And not only by them being at those three sessions, but that's why we're bringing in of our other sister's agencies, so they can provide the wraparound services. One of the things when you look at Richmond Behavior Health and Social Services, they probably already, if not touching that student, maybe someone inside that home, so that's what we're trying to do, you know, it's a work in progress, but I think we can make this happen. So any questions if you have them?
All right, I'll send for, by Ms. Mohammed.
I just wanted to say thank you, and that I, we've heard a lot from Dr. Bedden about this relationship, and I'm, I feel really great that something, this program's coming out of it, and I hope it can help our kids, and just, I, I know you said it's a work in progress, but, you know, I'm sitting here thinking about discipline, and how is this going to work as, if a child gets brought up on charges, well, I guess they won't get brought up on the charges, but if they're in this program, and then if they're on long-term suspension, how does that logistically work and all that? So that's sort of getting into the weeds of it, but, and I know that you all are probably thinking about it, but I would like to see if something happened to a student, if they were put out of school on long-term suspension, that they would still be able to participate in this intervention, I don't know if that's possible under our policy.
I, I think that the, the concept is, between Lieutenant McRoy and Ms. Jones, they're gonna look at each case, and I think that what we have said as leaders is, you two gotta get together and figure out, is this going to be a tool that can make a difference for this student? So I would not walk into it and saying, you couldn't.
Okay.
At least, I, I don't think of it that way, but, you know, they're the foot soldiers in the street and dealing with a lot of the kids, so they have to sit down and put their heads together to decide, are we using a space effectively? Or would this be a waste of space with regards to our outcomes? Because a child is not a waste, it's the outcomes that we're trying to, to achieve, and that's where they have to assess on who gets in and who doesn't.
Okay, and just one, one quick follow-up, but in terms of what, what we do with children that are coming up for expulsion and everything, as you move along in this process, I would appreciate any feedback we can get on, you know, policy tweaks, changes, whatever, that would help incorporate this program and support the program.
Ms. Upps?
Yes, I want to thank you all for this presentation. I, probably it is getting into the weeds of it, I know you're still kind of thinking about it, but RPS has had partnerships with the police department, we've had partnerships with some of the other entities that you've mentioned. Speak Out Program, we had the GRIP Program. How have you considered that we've had similar programs already a part of our school system? And what's different about LIFE?
Ms. Upps, I'm not familiar with the other programs, but I think what the difference is here, again, there was a report that said, state of Virginia led the nation in arresting kids. I recognize that, Dr. Bedden and all the partners recognize that. I think what the difference is, is we're not initially going to introduce our kids to the juvenile justice system, we're diverting them, again, they go through the program, thumbs up, they don't, then we may have to look at charging them for their misconduct. The criminal misconduct, that is.
Just on, just on a follow-up, I know we were, I knew you were gonna bring up, I think the difference is that, from day one, when Chief Durham came here, that he made one of his number-one goals, he has five major ones, but his number-one goal was youth intervention and interaction with. with youth, not just this program, but across the board in the department, from the beat officer to the detective to the 25-year veteran. And he made it very, very clear that he wants to have a proactive approach to dealing with youth. And we see what's going on around our country. He's been to symposiums, panel interviews, from open forums that we've had, that we know we have to do something. This is a, it's going to be a way, a new philosophy in our organization, that this is what we need to do, and we're going to move the organization forward, focusing on this as a whole concept, not just a trial run, that we're going to focus on youth. That's one of his main five, and it's very clear to us that that's the direction we're going to go while he's here. And I think it's going to be, I think this has tremendous ability to be a huge success that we can put in every school. But when we did the GRIP program, we kind of stemmed that out of South Richmond. I think this is, has the backing that we need. Maybe we didn't have that as much in some of those other programs.
Okay. And the anticipated date, start date?
Right now, we're looking right after the holiday break, the winter break. Yes, ma'am.
So that would be January?
January.
Okay, Ms. Mohammed?
Thank you. I really appreciate the time and effort that you all put into creating this program. I really appreciate what you're trying to do for our students through this program. One of my concerns that I have, and I'm sure you have had this discussion, is the parental involvement. If the parental involvement is low on the school system side, which we don't need a lot of evidence to show that, because it is, that's why we need the program, one of the reasons why, what do you have in place to get them involved?
That's a good question, and that's why I'm having a meeting this week with our partners, those other, I call them sister agencies here, Social Services, Behavior, Health. What I want to be clear is, if, we know some parents are just not involved in their kid's life, so we're not going to punish the kid in the program. But I think sometimes it's just having a conversation. If that means me going and knocking on the door telling them how important that is, then that's what I'll do. But I think, again, it's a lot of buy-in there, some momentum, if you will, going in for that, and that's a valid question, because we know there is not a lot of parent involvement in a kid's life, so.
Mr. Bourne? And Ms. Taylor?
Thank you, Ms. Bourne. Thank you all for being here this evening. With the program only able to facilitate about 20 students every three months or so, I guess this would be for Dr. Bennett and Ms. Jones, how is the district planning on facilitating the students who aren't able to participate, especially with the zero tolerance being removed? How are we going to give these students who don't make it into the program a second chance?
Well, the first thing, it's 40 students, because it's north and south, and, you know, we want to start with quality, not quantity. And so that's why the two, again, designees have to sit down and review files and really focus on successful outcomes. This is not going to be for everybody. It really isn't, just to be honest, just like we only have so many spots in Aspire. And also, one of the reasons I wanted to share the multi-pronged approach is that we are attacking our challenges from multiple facets. Some of the overage, undercredited students who would end up in here are probably already at Aspire, so they're having a better success there rather than ending up in a bad place now. But at the end of the day, to be honest with you, we're starting about at a point where we think we can get our hands around it, and then based on successes and failures and challenges, we're going to make decisions about what next? How many more can we manage? The resources are there, because we still have to, between the two of us, again, scrape pennies together and then also look for grants and other things to try to make this happen. So we've got to be smart about it, rather than just, you know, pie in the sky dream and then we set ourselves up for failure. And just being honest, and I don't know those other programs that Mrs. Epps mentioned, but I want to guess, too, that some of them probably ran out of steam, potentially, or funding or things like that that happened. So we've got to be strategic and smart, and it may be helpful, now that I've heard those names, to look at, why aren't they here now? So we don't repeat those mistakes.
Mr. Bourne?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Durham, thank you very much, Major Drew, RPS folks for putting this together. I think this is a pretty innovative approach, and just based on what I've seen, it's got a lot of potential. My question sort of piggybacks on something that was said about, and I do appreciate the quality versus quantity approach initially. One of the things that stood out was the funding from a grant perspective, and whether or not, there's been some thought already about long-term funding, because what I wouldn't want us to do is really do a great program and be able to fund it for a school year and a half and then have to stop. And I know that this pilot project will come before budget decisions are made by city council and the rest of the stakeholders. So I wonder what, if any, initial thought or approach or strategy has been developed or discussed about long-term sort of systemic funding rather than grant funding?
I'd like to, Chief Chairman for himself, I think for me, it's a matter of both trying to pursue, and I said, he probably wasn't at the meeting, I said it to Major Drew, all honestly, for me to feel very comfortable, for sustainability, I want the grants to be gravy on top to support it and be another piece. I think if we really want this to be successful, it's going to have to be an allocation that we both buy into as a city and a school district to sustain it, and then apply the metrics that the council and the board wants to have in place to say, "This is something we really need to keep," and depend on ourselves, first of all, and make tough choices. And then, at the same time, we say grants, is because we don't want to forego those opportunities when they can to support it or give relief in the years that we have to give relief. So that's been kind of my thought process with our team internally.
I have already tasked my grants manager to start looking for funding out there. I do know there's, with the AG's office, there's funding available. And also, you know, sometime we have to look at those private funds, and I notice that's not a lot that happens here, but we have a police foundation with many corporations, businesses sit on that. And those things, when you have a positive program, or what we're trying to do here to address the needs of our kids, I think there's monies out there. But like you said, just like anything, as Mrs. Epps said about those programs, I know Dr. Bennett said, maybe the funds dry up, because it happens. And I think what happens is, because we always depend on also those federal funds, as we know, especially on the federal side for funding, they're always cut, especially like on the DOJ side of the House. But you have what you call the cop's office in Washington DC, Department of Justice, they give a lot of grants, and those are the venues that we're exploring.
Follow-up, Mr. Chairman. One of the things is, in this, in the city, ever since the construction of the new Justice Center, a lot of emphasis has been put on, and Major Drew, you know this, on alternatives to incarceration. And one of the things that struck me about this is that it really dovetails nicely into that, because that really focuses on the adult piece of it. But clearly, we have an epidemic here with our numbers. You know, men lie, women lie, but numbers don't. We are arresting too many children, getting them into the criminal justice system. So to the extent that there's some commonalities and some overlap there, I think that, because that has been a priority for the city over the last several years.
As Deputy Chief Drew stated, you know, my passion is for youth. Again, one of my five focuses, youth engagement. I don't know if any of you have been, there's an exhibit over at Art 180 over on Marshall Street, and just talking about, these are kids that they brought out of our juvenile detention center, three days a week over to that studio, and they're telling their stories. And if you listen to these kids' stories, it's really sad, because it's not their fault. It's not their fault. So we have to do something as a community, law enforcement side, everybody, schools, citizens, you all, and that's what we're trying to do here. So we've been pushing forward, we started on this project, again, in June, we started talking about it, there's momentum now, just, again, bringing our other partners in, and they may not fit in right now, but we're going to move forward, so.
And I think the other piece that, when you talk about the partners, I think, I wasn't at the last meeting, but I think the Juvenile Justice Collaborative, which has a lot of agencies there, has finally bought into this, is the event, the initiative now that we all need to get behind in our agencies. So hopefully, that stays that way, and then those other people and pieces will come to play and make sure that this is sustainable also. Because now, the meeting I was at, the one before that, that was a comment. You know, we've been planning, planning, we finally got something that has a plan of action. Let's get on board with this one and get it going while we still keep doing the other stuff we're doing.
Dr. Jones?
I too want to thank you all for bringing this to the board. I think that this is the kind of stakeholder collaboration that we often need more of. So, and so I'm extremely excited about the program. Oftentimes, these things sound good in theory, but where the rubber meets the road is if they're able to actually move from theory to something that's sound and sustainable. And I know that there's some moving pieces here, and some of my colleagues have brought them up, and the two that stick out to me are parent involvement, as well as the funding of which Mr. Bourne spoke. And I know that you're going to be doing the heavy lifting and figuring out how that's all going to work. I want to be able to champion this, but I would like to be more certain of the sustainability of the program. Would you all be willing to come back after the winter break to give us an update on where we are with funding and where we are with the parental involvement piece? And even perhaps how we can help in our separate districts to champion this cause? I mean, I think that we all could use some of our connections and community organizations to bring attention, much-needed attention, to what you're doing. So I think it would be good if we revisited this down the road, perhaps right after we get back to get started for the winter break, and just kind of assess where we are, if you'd be willing to do that, Chief and Dr. Bennett.
Yes, that won't be a problem.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you all so much.
The next item is an update regarding John Marshall and Glenn Allen. Mr. Bourne?
Madam Clerk, thank you, Mr. Chair. It won't take too much time. As many people know, there was a football game on Friday night between Glenn Allen High School and John Marshall High School. Unfortunately, and these are my words, a careless, reckless student decided to play a highly offensive and very inappropriate song during the warm-up period. I received a call this morning on my way to work from John Montgomery, Chair of the Henrico School Board, continuing what I understand happened throughout the weekend from the leadership at Glenn Allen High School, from the Henrico School District, where they are appalled and embarrassed by what happened, and they're very apologetic, and they assured, Mr. Montgomery assured me that they were investigating it, looking into it, and they would take the appropriate disciplinary actions against anyone who was involved in that. So that warmed my heart. When something like that happens with young people involved, you know, the risk of it going the wrong way is always high. But I'll close out by just saying that I am extremely proud of everybody that was there, from John Marshall High School, the coach, the principal. My understanding is the coach handled that remarkably well. When the players came up to him and said, "Coach, did you hear that? Did you hear the song?" He said, "Yes, but you know, we came here, we have a job to do, let's stay focused on that job, and we'll deal with it at the appropriate time," and they did. And as I told Coach Thompson today, when I talked to him, I said, "Well, it seems to me that you all let your play on the field give them the response they were looking for." And so that was, I think, just a little bit of icing on the cake, because we demonstrated that we are classy and we are above the pettiness and that type of behavior, because that doesn't do anything but tear our communities further apart than they may already be. So just wanted to let sort of everybody know that, in my estimation, Henrico has sort of owned it appropriately, professionally, and I appreciate Mr. Montgomery's call. To me, I appreciate the way that our faculty, coaches, and students, most importantly, handled that difficult situation on Friday night.
I'd like to add that, Mr. Chairman, Montgomery, Henrico also called me, ditto what he shared with Mr. Bourne, and just a real sense of, as leaders, you know, our responsibility to make sure that these type of things are investigated and taken care of. And I affirm, Mr. Bourne, also, just the appreciation for the student athletes and the coaches of John Marshall High School. When I talked to Mr. Montgomery, he also affirmed that they chose to show sportsmanship and be focused on the business at hand, which was the football game. So, okay. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.
The next item is public information. You have two speakers who signed up in advance. What is your pleasure, Mr. Chair?
Two speakers?
Yeah, just two speakers.
Okay.
Three minutes?
You go ahead and call the names now.
Before we get into public information, I would like to remind persons who speak that persons appearing before the board are not to engage in personal attacks of any individual. Campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use profanity or vulgar language. Also, please be reminded that there is no applause during public information. Mr. Reginald Malone? And please state your name again for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the school board, and the superintendent and his administration. I'm here to, again tonight, to represent the concerned parents of the Blackwell community concerning Blackwell Elementary School. I know this has become somewhat sensitive and unbearable situation at Blackwell, but I'm asking once again that this board do the right thing and simply wipe away the administration at Blackwell Elementary School. You see, education matters in our community, too. It still does. And the taxpayers and parents of Blackwell are not going to tolerate this type of situation in our schools. Now, I came to you 14 weeks ago, and I ask that you eradicate this matter 14 weeks ago. Now, I'm imploring you again to please take serious action at Blackwell Elementary Community School, because, you see, when you have egregious acts going on at a school, and the taxpayers are aware of it, as well as the parents, it's important for the school board to be responsive. Now, I brought in 200-plus signatures 14 weeks ago. Now, had this been any other community, 200-plus signatures, we would have probably had automatic action. There has been no action taken to date, and my community is very unsettled about that. And there were people sitting here in this room tonight who defended and upheld the actions that were going on at Blackwell. I see that smoke is somewhat dissipating now, because we aren't going to give up. And I would rather this matter be solved in 2015 than to enter into 2016. As my grandmother used to say, "If it enters in 2016, cater by the door, because it's not going to end." Now, all we ask is that we receive something for our tax dollar, and that's going to be all I'm saying at now, because I would hope that there has not been a conspiracy and it reaches to downtown. Our community knows there's been one at the school, but we don't want it to reach to downtown. My second matter, I'm glad that you all talked about the school-to-prison pipeline tonight. Someone is finally deciding to do something about it.
Thirty seconds.
Our kids are too important, and zero tolerance is just that, zero. It has always been. Now, this school board, I hope you're serious about doing this, because our kids matter and their lives have to be saved. And please, by all means, do something about the barriers that exist concerning parental involvement. There are some serious barriers. This program you talk about tonight, Mr. Superintendent, cannot work without breaking down those barriers to parental involvement, serious barriers. They've been there for years.
Good evening, good evening. I've seen you guys already, I'm Evandra Catherine. I am here today standing with dignities and I am here today standing with Dignities and Schools Campaign. They're standing with me on behalf of my child who was suspended. And should we get five minutes?
You have three. You have three. You have three minutes.
What about organization? We don't...
That's tonight, three minutes.
That's not what she initially said when she read the rules.
All right.
I want my five minutes.
All right, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, back to the beginning. I'm with Dignities and Schools Campaign, standing here, and with them and other children that are suspended. And the reason I'm here today is because I have a five-year-old with special needs. He goes to step, Jeb Stuart. He was suspended, and I really feel like my son's civil rights were violated at five years old to be suspended with a special need. The school did not follow any procedures that would permit him being suspended at five years old and with a special need. And as a result of his special need, what occurred was something that we know is going to happen, and it's in his IEP. And so I'm standing here today with Dignities and Schools to make sure that we bring awareness to the fact that we are suspending kids in elementary school, but particularly five-years-old. And so as a parent, I had to tell my child the reason he was suspended from school was because he had frustrated. Part of his disability is how to act in a social setting. The school is supposed to help him learn how to act in a social setting. Sending him home, to me, is not allowing him to act appropriately in a social setting. And so that's kind of really all I want to state on my son, and I will let the rest of them go ahead and continue.
Good evening, board members. My name is Candace Lucas, and I am one of the co-founders of Advocates for Equity in Schools, which is sponsored by Dignity in Schools, a national campaign that addresses school push-out and the violation of civil rights regarding children with disabilities and children of color. I must say that I continue to be appalled at the deafening silence and ineffective response of this school board regarding our children and the school-to-prison pipeline. I do understand that our police officers are trying to work on it, but it needs to come from you. We need to start by having individuals that are trained to deal with our children with disabilities. Having someone in an IEP meeting that does not understand the concepts related to autism is a civil rights violation. We can sue you for that. I'm sure you have experience with being sued. We can sue you for that. You must have individuals that can support our children. That is the first intervention that you can use so they don't end up in the school-to-prison pipeline. You want to say it's parental engagement? I challenge you and say it's school engagement by starting to put qualified individuals that deal with our children with special needs. Now, Dr. Bettin, I sent you an email on July 12th, and I advised you of the violations regarding the school district as it relates to children with disabilities. The Virginia Department of Education, as of June 1, cited this district for violating the civil rights of black children, of children with disabilities. I sent this to you, and I asked what was the plan, and I got no response. So that sends me a message that you really don't care about our children with special needs. The Virginia Department of Education, you see that right here, it says, "Richmond City Schools Needs Assistance From The Virginia Department Of Education Regarding Children With Special Needs." That means that it is a sense of urgency. That means we need to get individuals trained, not be defensive. Parents with special needs, parents who have children with special needs deserve every single right that each one of your children, especially the children that attend the school where Mr. Hudson is, because I know a majority of your children attend there. Okay, so a majority of our kids, we want the same rights that you have for your children, and we should get it. I should not have to fight people that look like me to get civil rights for children that look like you. I shouldn't have to do that. It's time to wake up and stop. The bureaucracy is killing our children. So you need to do something, or we will continue to come back. And next time, I'm going to bring the national organization with us. So you need to handle this, giving you a fair warning and not playing about our kids. They cannot speak for themselves, so we're here to speak for them. Thank you.
In addition to that, and my name is Lorraine Wright. I also stand with Dignity in Schools, Advocates for Equities in Schools, as well as my nonprofit I Vote For Me. But we talked a lot about parent engagement on this board. This gentleman right here is parent engagement. This is your community, and he's come, he's come back, he came with signatures, there's still nothing done. What Ms. Lucas was talking about is a lack of response. There's a pattern, because there was a lack of response. Mr. Coleman, you and I have spoken over the summer. I gave you a full plan in terms of what we can do to change the climate in Richmond City Public Schools, change the climate.
Thirty seconds.
Chief Duran gave a great theoretical program and idea, but we need to change the climate of how we interact, not only with our students, but with parents, with community members, and that's not happening. So Richmond City Public Schools, you need to do better, and sooner rather than later, because this sense of urgency is only escalating. Virginia is number one in the nation, number one in the nation, for school-based referrals to the criminal justice system. It needs to end now.
Please be reminded that there is no applause during public information.
That was the name. Any other names?
That's it.
Okay.
Good evening.
Hold on, Mr. Bullock. Hold on one second, please, sir. Madam Clerk, there are no more individuals that have signed up to speak tonight?
No, sir.
Okay. At this time, there is anyone who would want to address the board? If you would get in line at this time, please? Madam Clerk? Could you read our protocol again, please?
Persons appearing before the school board are not allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, engage in personal attacks of anyone, or use pro...
Excuse me, one second, please. Could you say that one again, please?
Persons appearing before the school board are not allowed to engage in personal attacks of any individual, campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use profanity or vulgar language. Also, there is no applause during our public information period.
Okay, tonight, as we have these opportunities, there are a lot of people here who want to speak to us. I've had the privilege of serving in this seat over a year and a half. I feel absolutely confident that what I try to do is allow people to say what they need to say. But it's critical that we treat one another with respect. So it's, tonight, we're asking again, with highly emotional-charged situations, we still need to follow the protocol. I try not to cut people off. I try to give people the benefit of the doubt when I feel like what they're doing is a personal attack. So help me out, please. We're here, the way this is set up, we get to hear what you have to say. But I think we all can, even with our passion, be respectful. Due to the number of people we have here tonight, all speakers will only have two minutes, because that will allow us, as a board, to get to other business that we do have here tonight. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Roderick Bullock. I was, I'm coming here because hearing the same thing about special needs children. I went to my barber shop, and he, my barber said, "Go with his daughter to MLK." I go to MLK, and lo and behold, I see the teacher that I had a discussion with, with the school board member, and told him that the teacher taped the child mouth shut, exceptional A, exceptional E, needs child. The same child I came to you about that stayed out of school for the first two weeks of school, because he didn't, they said he didn't have his T R shot or whatever. He ended up in the Richmond Free Press. But next thing I know, his teacher shut his mouth up with tape. I was told that the situation would be handled. He's an exceptional need. He can't really talk for himself, and the teachers are still there at MLK, teaching. Absolutely appalled. I was flabbergasted to see this, that this man tapes a child mouth shut, but he's still teaching, and he's still involved with children. This man should not still be teaching. He should be removed from the school. He should not have came back. His contract shouldn't have been renewed. I was told that it was going to be handled, and it wasn't handled. It was a situation up there at my barber shop that everybody was going to go down there and handle their business with this teacher after he didn't shut somebody's, put tape all over his mouth for a child that can't even speak for himself. And this young man, he has very serious special needs, very serious. And to allow a teacher to tape his mouth shut, and then you allow him to still be in the classroom. Ms. Lucas is right. Nothing is being done about the children with special needs.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. There's some dog in that cat when you change the rules in the middle of the game, Mr. Chair. But I suspect these people, and this long line has a lot to do with the fact of what's been said tonight. We've been beseeching you over and over, and nothing gets done. Frustration builds, folks show up. I don't need to make personal attacks. However, to let you know that I'm here, I went to that meeting last Thursday at John B. Carey, and it was the most appalling demonstration I've ever seen in my life, with data being used as gospel that was totally, totally unusable, out of date. Folks being told that this is the only thing that we can do to move forward teachers in order to help with leveling. Leveling, Mr. Chairman, is a euphemism for rezoning. And now we're understanding that a larger part of the system is impacted with overcrowding. It is the effect of your rezoning Plan C that you bullheadedly passed, led by the gentleman from the First District, to rezone this school system in a matter of weeks, when just six months earlier, the system had been rezoned after an 18-month process. It's insane what you're doing. And how, pray tell, are you going to level the school population by moving teachers when it's the children that are overpopulated and underpopulated? It's the children that need to be moved, and you've got more than enough funding to do it in savings and petroleum. Y'all in high cotton, I suspect, with money saved on gas. And so don't give me the business that we can't afford it. We need to move the children, not the teachers. This group will hear more about it. I need to sign.
Mr. Chair, school board members, Dr. Bettin, others, it's good to see you. I was sitting in my seat earlier when I walked in, hoping that I didn't miss the public conference. My name is Charles Wallace. I'm here today as Executive Director of Citizens Against Crime. And I was smiling at something that I could remember back. When I asked for the agenda, I was pointed to the agenda when I walked in, and I started reading, and I noticed that I couldn't read it because it was in Spanish. For those that know, a couple of years ago, that was something that I wholeheartedly wished for and pushed for. So I'm not upset. I'm very excited to see that it's in Spanish. I had to reach over to Mar DeJurel and ask him to read his in English, so I'm very excited about this, and I'm happy about that. I'll come on another note. First of all, I come to thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the school board, especially Mr. Chair, sitting, hearing the remarks you're doing out there in recognition of our founder, which is going on to glory, Alicia C. Razor, the remarks that was made during the Home Going Service, knowing that our school board, whether you were there present or not, but knowing that the board recognizes the work that she done. Dr. Bettin, I don't know how often that you and Alicia Razor got to chat or meet with each other, but she was very instrumental and very serious about the education of our young ones. In her home, there was a year-round Christmas tree, that when folks had gotten their report cards, she'd never judge whether or not they were acceptable ones, as far as their grades or whether they were exciting ones, but if they just bought their report card to her home, then they could select a gift from under the tree. All of this came with the wishes and gratitude that she put out throughout our city of Richmond and other districts. So I stand up for you today to say to you that Citizens Against Crime is in need of your support, your help. I still serve as Executive Director. I will continue to do the work that we do, and that is to be there during a time of bereavement, during a time of tragedy, especially when it hits our young ones. So again, I want to thank you, I want to thank each and every one of you all. Please don't stop reaching out. We will not stop reaching out to you. Whatever we can do as Citizens Against Crime, and I think one of the prime things as I close, as I close, is this piece right here that was presented today, that pipeline where we are looking at alternative programs for our youth instead of incarcerating them. I think that's a great opportunity to show, and we're going to make sure that we support that program as much as we can. And thank God for, there's a ram in the bush, because I don't see the time saying, "Stop." I don't see nothing going, but I am going to stop at that point. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, members of the school board. I'm Nathan B. R. I'm here today, I'm representing a group of guys that get together every morning at McDonald's, many retired, some of us work part-time, and then some of us, like myself, we work for ourselves, so we probably work till we die. Actually, we sit around in the morning, and we solve the world's problems. This morning, politics was local. A word came up that I had never heard. It sounded pretty gentle, sounded real fair, leveling. And when the conversation stopped, I said, "Oh, we used to call that segregation and massive resistance. What is going on with this school board?" I look around, and it looks like progress from whence I come, but is it really progress? You know, it's unfortunate. It's unfortunate that we talk about kids with special needs. I'm going to jump fast start here now, because I know our time has been cut. I am a parent. I've got two grandkids in Richmond Public Schools. I've raised two kids that went to Richmond Public Schools, one adopted with special needs. I sued you guys twice. I'm 2-0. Fortunately, I'm not 0-2, or he wouldn't have graduated with an advanced degree from Richmond Public Schools. Why do I have to sue you to get my son an education?
Thirty seconds.
You know, I tell you, this seems to be the political jump-off for a lot of folks. You would think that people that join up to be on the school board would have a compassion for children, but it seems like this is the way to get to the State House, upstairs, or some other house. But it doesn't seem that you have time to really devote to the kids that you were elected to protect.
Time.
Good evening. I am Laqueta Massey. I am the mother of Kenderek Massey. I am the mother of Kenderek Massey. I'm the mother of Kenderek Massey, and I say it three times, because I get tired of being ignorant concern of my son. I have a son with special needs. I thank you, Ms. Gray, for responding. I thank you... I thank you for, Ms. Epps, for your support. Every year, my son's condition has fallen on that's sitting up here today. He's a model adolescent. He attends Albert Hill Middle School. He's thirteen years old. He's in the eighth grade with an IQ over one-twenty, but he reads at a second-grade level. It's a problem. And it's a real problem. And it's just not my son. I have several clients that are educators in the R P S and they talk about the things that they are not given or how they're not supported, or when they complain concerning kids with the same issues that my son have, that they don't get the support. Hmm. Sad. Um, I along with many others on behalf of my son made it known to you many times that you are violating my son's civil rights by not properly accommodating him. He has dysgraphia, dyslexia, reflexive neurovascular dystrophy. My question is, how much longer do you all, everyone sitting today, do you all, 'cause everybody needs to be held accountable?
Thirty seconds.
How long do you all intend to keep ignoring my son's needs and violating his civil rights? Not just my sons, but all the kids. How long do you continue, plan on continuing violating these children? It's like the Hunger Games panel. There's a problem. Every last individual needs to be held accountable. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Latrice Swenson. I am coming to you on behalf of my coworkers in Department of Transportation. I am coming to you today on behalf of myself and most of my coworkers. The employees of transportation is being misrepresented by very few that's saying they're coming on behalf of transportation. They are supported by our local group. I would first like to bring to the attention the local chapter union should be separate from R P S transportation. Then we cannot have a union while working with the state because Virginia is a right-to-work state. Just to inform you all, most of the time, we are never even informed of the issues brought before you all. I also come to you on behalf of myself and most of my colleagues, letting you all know the issues that have come before you are not all of our feelings. I would like to see something implemented where we can be informed of the things coming to you all. I understand your time is precious and you have a lot of things to deal with, and I would like to have it addressed because the issues being brought before you all are not the feelings of most of the department and pupil transportation.
Thirty seconds.
And I just wanted to come today to let you know that we are being misrepresented. Thank you.
Sorry? Sign? I gotta sign. Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for your service. My name's Adria Sharf. I'm the parent of a third grader at John B. Carey Elementary School, and I'm a officer of the P T A. I'm here tonight to talk with you about leveling. We had a community forum at the school a few days ago. We really appreciated Dr. Bedden coming and Dr. Leonard and Mr. Coleman and Ms. Taylor and Ms. Harris Mohammed. It was a wrenching evening with teachers crying and kids upset, and there's an emotional quality to this process that's really, really wrenching, and I hope over time we can figure out a better way, um, to make these adjustments. But at John B. Carey, we have a very specific situation that I need to bring to your attention. The state code requires that the leveling target figures for teacher-to-people ratio be based on two thousand twelve free lunch data. However, John B. Carey is truly a special case because we are entirely a different school demographically today than we were in two thousand twelve. If R P S proceeds to strip away teachers from four grade levels at John B. Carey, you would be making that decision based on the assumption that we are a middle-class school or that we are a middle-income school. Our free and reduced rate, um, free and reduced lunch rate jumped by something like twenty percentage points in two thousand thirteen as a result of the rezoning process. So again, John B. Carey is an entirely different school today. We're a Title I school. We have a free and reduced lunch rate of sixty-nine percent. Our children work, um, very hard, um, and, um, we, um, asked that this body which made the decision to rezon, and that process has set off a number of different consequences for this school that frankly have been very, very difficult year after year. It's been a very trying three years, but you have a resilient group of parents and exceptional teachers who have hung in there in the school. We are proud that our school combines diversity and excellence. John B. Carey is the type of school that should be replicated, um, and we are concerned that this could be the last draw. So thank you for doing the right thing.
Good evening. My name is Alex Newsom. I'm here to speak on behalf of Swansboro Elementary. It's a pleasure to be in the presence of you all tonight. However, I wish it could be under more positive circumstances. I along with my colleagues, I'm here today from Swansboro Elementary, a small priority school on Richmond's South Side. A couple of weeks back, our school was handed down a mandate to remove two of our colleagues to assist other schools in leveling out student-to-teacher ratios. I understand the leveling process and how it can certainly benefit other schools. However, for us, on the other hand, we fear that the effects could be crippling. See, truth be told, the foundation of this school was solid before I ever arrived. I'm actually a first-year full-time teacher in fifth grade. So I know you're wondering what makes me qualified to speak on this issue. It's because in the short time that I've been here, I've found a group of caring educators who genuinely have come together and benefited their students. I had the blessing of being inherited, inherited to a great group of people and educators and even worked with some of them during a summer teaching experience. I'm a firm believer that there's no such thing as a perfect teacher. None of us, and I myself being new, am especially susceptible to the bumps and bruises that come along with teaching. But on my path to development, if given a choice, I would choose to grow and develop at Swansboro Elementary. And I know I speak for all of my colleagues, both old and new. When I say that, it is for these reasons. We humbly ask the City of Richmond to allow our school to remain intact.
Thirty seconds.
We humbly ask the City of Richmond allow our teachers to preserve the bonds and relationships formed with our students. We humbly ask the City of Richmond allow Swansboro to continue to make positive strides and impacts in the surrounding community. We humbly ask that you save our teachers. Our students matter too. Thank you and have a blessed evening.
Okay, at this time, we are closing the line. So, is anyone else who wants to speak? This is your last opportunity to get into the line. All right? Okay. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Dr. Bedden and school board members. I'm coming before you as a parent tonight, and I believe I brought this concern to you a couple of weeks ago, and this is concerning Mary Scott Elementary. I want to address, um, there is no nurse there. I'm sure all of you know that there is no nurse at Mary Scott Elementary. This is a head start program that is funded by the federal and the state, and today my child became sick. Now, I believe I told the other day that I had investment in Richmond Public Schools and I would wanna return. And I fight for children hard. Every time I come down here, I fight just like I was in the military twenty-six years for my soldiers, and I'm gonna continue to fight for our children in the City of Richmond School, but tonight I'm fighting for my child because you should have a nurse in every school, at least if it's not full-time, it should be part-time. Now, I spoke with your medical health specialist who's not qualified as medical certified either, and she is the one that's supposed to come over there to Mary Scott and diagnose the children. This is unacceptable. This is a federal and state-funded program. If this school board don't want to do anything, I'm sure I will take it to Governor McAuliffe. This is where you're giving the money from anyway, from the state. I pay my taxes state and federal. I serve my country. I'm serving my community. And I wanna answer tonight, Mr. Coleman, this is your school. I wanna answer tonight. What are you gonna do about the nurses for a hundred and ninety small babies from three to five years old that don't have a nurse? Who's gonna take their temperature? Who's gonna take care of the children that have asthma, diabetes? This is unacceptable for a Richmond school. All of you, if hurting that your school goes to, your children goes to, they have a nurse, bring that nurse over to Mary Scott School.
Good evening, Superintendent, members of the school board. My name is Charlotte Hare and I am President of the Richmond Education Association. The first thing that I'd like to say tonight is, is that I'd like to remind all of you, including those in the audience, that October is Safe Schools Month. And as we have in the past, the Richmond Education Association has worked collaboratively with safety and security to come up with activities for our children and community to become involved in so that they can remain safe at school, on the way home, and in all activities in their community. So I enlist you tonight to work with our schools, work with our communities, and make our schools safe and our children safe. So in the spirit of collaboration, again, tonight, R E A comes to you, bringing its wealth of knowledge and information and ability to help you in areas that have been shown tonight. So in the spirit of collaboration tonight, I offer you R E A's hand, not to be held up against us, but to be held out and taken to join with you to help you in some of the issues that have been brought up tonight. Let us help you work with the parents and the community. Let us help you bridge the gap so that everybody gets a chance to say what it is that needs to be said and done for their children. Let us help you provide opportunities for professional growth so that everyone can be a professional up to the par of being highly qualified. Let R E A be a worker standing beside you so that we can bridge the gap that we need to bridge so that our children in every single school in Richmond
Thirty seconds.
can get a quality public education. I remind all of you tonight that you are a person who is sitting in a seat. You have been given much. That means that you have much to give back and much to look for. I remind you that you are a servant leader, and to whom much is given, much is required, and in order to be a good servant leader, you must learn to be a good servant. I remind you tonight to take your jobs seriously. Do the best for every single child, no matter what zip code,
Time.
address, community, school that the children live in. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Wood. I'm the mother of a seventh grader at Lucille Brown Middle School. Um, I'm here on behalf of a group of parents on the North Side of Richmond, uh, several of whom travel, um, three hours a day to get to school, and that's both the morning and the, and the afternoon rides added together. We have, uh, written a letter to the principal, Mr. Morris. He is not able to be here tonight. He's sick, so I wanted to make sure that these words were heard by you and hopefully find out who to give this letter to and the maps that are attached. We've agreed that the current amount of time that our children are spending on the bus to and from school each day is not reasonable or healthy. We've been unofficially informed, there's a possibility that this very long route will be split into two separate bus routes. A bus is available, we're told, but no driver is available, and until such time as a driver is hired for a split route, we contacted known parents expressing concern to work out in a meeting at a local public library on North Avenue, how the bus route could be made more efficient, and while still considering the safety of our students on their way to their bus stops. We were not able to contact all the parents and we are hoping for your help in doing this. We've attached a proposed new bus stop and route to this letter and appreciate your help distributing this again, and also to the Transportation Department. We have tried to contact them sometimes with no response whatsoever. Uh, we have thirteen stops on here instead of nineteen. I won't go into the details.
Thirty seconds.
Another problem we're having is that the bus reverses its route in the afternoon so that the children who are dropped off, picked up first are dropped off last. So they're spending three hours on the bus while the children who are picked up last are dropped off first. So they're spending perhaps a half an hour on the bus. This seems very unfair and could easily be rectified. Last, our bus, because of changed start times to schools, is getting to school to pick up our children half an hour late in the afternoon, and this needs to be fixed. Thank you very much.
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here on behalf of Southampton Elementary School. I have a daughter in the first grade and I'm also Vice President of the P T A. I'm here on three issues. One is the leveling. We're losing our teachers. However, we have a special education class that has kindergarten through fifth grade in it, which is very unacceptable, especially considering it's special ed and special needs. We're losing teachers where they can be placed into the special needs class. I'm also here regarding the transportation issue. Our dismissal time is three forty-five P M. Our buses are not getting to our school to four-thirty, four-forty-five. That's in forty-five minutes to an hour past dismissal time. What does that mean? Our kids are getting home after dark. I know my daughter's school bus pulls up at her stop at six P M every night. School gets out at three forty-five. That's not acceptable. Also, what does that mean? We have teachers that are there to who knows when, when these buses pick up. They're providing free childcare. They're not getting paid to be there, and on top of that, they have mandatory staff development that they have to be there for. So they are there eight, nine o'clock at night, back at eight o'clock in the morning to do the same thing every day. We need to get the transportation on schedule and we need to keep our teachers in our school. Teachers matter. Students matter. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Stuckey. I am a parent of a first grader at John B. Carey Elementary School, um, and I am here to speak about the leveling process. The proposed changes to John B. Carey class sizes for K through third, um, what's being proposed for the class sizes is going to put our class sizes at the maximum so that if any other children come in in the middle of the school year, then we're gonna be in these overcrowded classes, which is what you're trying to avoid. John B. Carey should be held up as an example of what a school should be. The low class sizes are wonderful. Our first grader, last year in kindergarten, started out kind of slow, having little difficulties, and by the end of the school year, he is, scores were off the charts. This year, in just the few weeks that he's been in school, his reading level has progressed, and I really think that he benefits from these low class sizes, and I think that all of the schools should be able to benefit from this, but not by taking away our teachers. We should be able to keep our teachers as well as the other schools and find some other solution for this. John B. Carey is said to have low enrollment. A big part of- A big part of the reason for this low enrollment is once the school was rezoned, what we were left with are two large cemeteries, several parks, and a large stadium takes up a huge portion of our zone. So really, there's not many kids that live in our area. If we need more enrollment, we need more kids to be coming into that school. The kids in K through three especially need stability in their lives. They are in school for the majority of their day. Their teachers are with them for the majority of their day. They're just now at the time where they have grown used to these teachers and their classrooms. And if they get moved, then they're going to have to start from square one, like they're starting the first day of school, almost near the middle of the school year. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rob Stuckey. I'm also a parent at John B. Carey Elementary School. Much has been said about it already, but I do have a few details I think that's worth considering. The data is out of date. If you don't know that now, now you do. The, if leveling does occur now, that will only take effect for 228 days before that needs to be reevaluated. The ratios for our school will decrease based on new data that will be submitted by the city by the end of the year. And that will drop to about a 16 to 1 ratio versus 24 to 1. And we're actually at about 16 to 1 now. So I urge you to just take that into account and consider just leaving Carey where it is. It's where it needs to be already. And I also would encourage you to work with the state to examine the data. The next budget cycle will include new data for Fox as well. Fox may, we may find that Fox is also more overcrowded than we think it is, currently at 114% capacity. Depending on those ratios, if those ratios fall, it could be in the 130s and we have an overcrowding problem in one school. Next door, we have empty seats in another.
30 seconds.
And I would also urge you to examine the rezoning process that occurred. It just does not seem to have worked. It just didn't seem like it was a good idea at the time. Now it seems like it has not worked out. All right, listen, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Deidra Harris and I have been employed with RPS for 15 years. I am now on leave. I had triplets, yes, triplets. And I have been out and the doctor returned me back to work on August the 23rd. I have yet got an answer from HR about my position and where I stand with RPS. This has been taking a toll on me. And not only that, I request my personnel filed on last week and went through it. And it said, a letter in there said that I was terminated on 20, 2002, which was not correct. So my thing is, is the communication piece is mishandled in HR. I just need to know where do I stand with RPS? Thank you.
My name is Melissa Gray. I'm with the John B. Carey PTA. This is not about us getting more than anybody else. And we would love for every school in the city of Richmond to have a 16 to 1 count. Every single one. We have a special, a special year in that we haven't been completely destroyed and we have survived a volley lobbed at us every six years. Our principal has put in the special needs kids within our class, which means we really need those teachers. We don't need them taken out. We don't, we, last year, we were understaffed. This year, apparently, we have four too many and for numbers that are incorrect. Data that is based on what Adria said, we are not the school that we were in 2012. And when I heard that the superintendent wanted to give free breakfast and lunches, I cried because I said, wow, this is really someone who really has a heart for these kids. And I'm not going to lay it completely on you, sir. I do want us to look at the ways that we cut corners in these children's education, funding-wise, as it was said a few last week, what the adults do when we talk about money. The fact that these lunch ratios are not being, are not being looked at, it's very convenient because here we are making decisions on data completely out of date or possibly even no data. And this is not the accountability on the part of this board that we have come to trust. This is reckless. This is possibly illegal and most certainly immoral. And to put the teachers on that emotional roller coaster that they have been on with zero warning, zero warning. And the only reason that we knew what was happening was because there were children and teachers crying in my hallway.
Good evening. To the chairman, to the board members, and to the superintendent. My name is Roy Bryant and I'm here tonight. I didn't come down here to hear all this that is going on in the school board with the schoolchildren. I was just trying to relax myself in this city, not to do any more fighting for our children because I felt that you all were going to be the ones that do it. But tonight, my heart is heavy. This levelling, I talked to, I wish I could talk to the board, but I've been told that the superintendent is the one that controls everything. And that's who I'm talking to. I sat in his office and he told me the leveling. And I said, well, I told my grandson, the superintendent said this is what's going to be. Well, you got to go along with it. But after listening now and hearing more, then I know the fight is not over. I came here tonight to talk about John B. Carey. God, I've been trying to get in contact with your Assistant Superintendent in reference to the environment, the mode, and the testing that is going on there. Also, the testing that is going on at Francis. And if you can help me to be able to get in contact with somebody, that's why I came down. I can't do it on the phone. I got to come down here and talk to you in a public meet. Because from what I've seen, it's a lot of things to be told, but then when you get out the office, it's not told the same way. So I just ask you if you can get me that person where I can talk to him before I leave out here. Is he short, tall? Okay, I'm, thank you, sir. I'm going to run up there and get him before another story be told.
Good evening, honorable members of the City School Board. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. I'm a resident, Teresa Lynn Slayton. I'm a resident of the 8th District. However, my daughter, a third grader, is zoned for the 9th. But I chose the 5th so that I could be an involved and engaged parent working in the downtown area and I could go and have lunch with her and participate with her classmates at John B. Carey Elementary. Wow, what can I say? Four teachers. That I understand the Virginia Department of Education K-3 primary class size reduction. I understand the numbers. But as other parents have spoken, the dynamics have changed. I want to thank the superintendent for completing the application for the community eligibility provision. And thank you. But I would be the first parent to say, I'm willing to fill out an application so that we can get good data on the free and reduced lunches in the Richmond Public Schools. I just want to make sure that when you go through this process, that we understand when we take our committed, certified general education teachers and poach them out of John B. Carey Elementary, that we're not placing them as place cards in schools, that there are no classes, rooms currently to receive them, that there's no space to receive them, and that we don't take these general education teachers and put them in classrooms where they will be teacher assistants. That's not fair to the students of John B. Carey. That's not fair to highly qualified individuals in the field of education. And I certainly, as a resident of the South Side, I know the South Side numbers are often given. I hope that we don't take children out of the 5th District and put them in the 4th District, if I may call a school W-H-E-S, because their ratio is more of a 20 to 1 or 21 to 1. Thank you for your time, consideration.
Good evening, Dr. Bedden. Ms. Taylor, our school board representative. My name is Pedro Hampton. I am representing Swansboro Elementary School in South Richmond. We are currently in danger of losing teachers due to leveling across Richmond City Public Schools. I believe that it is too late and unwarranted to be moving teachers during this time. Our school is located in a high poverty-stricken environment and our one constant thing is our teachers. To lose teachers at this time will impact student achievement as well as deflate the morale in the community within this school. Our school is currently in priority status and has already lost our esteemed principal prior to the start of the school year. Although an interim principal has been appointed, we have faced major changes in our school community and losing more teachers will end up creating an unstable learning environment for our students who have already established relationships with their current teachers. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the Richmond Public Schools School Board. I'm here, I'm here invited because I have an issue with the Human Resources Department and I would like to have the issue discussed in private.
Good evening. My name, can you hear me come down? Okay. Good evening. My name is Marshall Martin and I'm here in support of what a couple other parents have discussed tonight about the bus transportation for Richmond Public Schools. I also have a daughter that averages two and a half hours a day on her bus ride to school. Part of it is lengthened by the long wait she has at the end of the day waiting for her bus to show up, which can be anywhere from a 20 someday. One or two days, it's been 45 minutes. There's never been a day, there's only been two days where the bus has shown up right after the school has ended. So if to catch her scheduled stop, she leaves the house at 7:00 AM, but typically doesn't get home until 4:30 or quarter of 5 because of bus transportation. I understand it's a logistical puzzle. I feel like the Transportation Department, when the parents from the North Side have called, they've been very polite, have listened to our concerns, have tried to be responsive. And I was pleased to see it's going to be on the agenda tonight about trying to rectify this situation. I'm asking the board to please give whatever support you can to help correct the situation because I feel like a two and a half hour ride for many of these kids is just too much. It's too much. So thank you.
How you guys doing today? I'm Adriana Moody. I'm a parent at John B. Carey Elementary School. I was coming here today to tell you not to take our teachers and how wonderful our school is and how exceptional to the rules they are. But as I look around and I listen to the stories that these parents tell before me, somewhere along the line, the ball has been dropped, period. Not just with John B. Carey, not just with the elementary school, but with transportation and everything else. And I'm going to quote Dr. Bedden. This is something that he said to us at the meeting. He said, what do you do in your household when you have a whole bunch of bills and not enough money? And well, what I told him is everything that I'm going to tell you guys because it was only about four of you at the meeting, four or five of you at the meeting that night. I said, well, what do I do? Because I'm a single parent, I take the time and I make sure that my kids have everything they need before I make sure what I want is provided. So that means if I only got one pack of ramen noodle, they're going to get some ramen noodle with some chicken and some soup, and some pasta. And we're going to call it soup and that's what they're going to eat and I'm going to go starving. So now I'm asking you guys because apparently the administration budget is humongous, whereas the actual education budget is very low. I'm asking you guys to allow your children to eat and you starve. Reduce your budget just for one year and do a hiring of teachers. I'm sure within that year, everything will balance back out.
30 seconds.
So there is no need because I already talked to Kent Dickey from the Virginia Department of Education, which is the Deputy Superintendent of Finance and Operations. And he said that the budget cannot be adjusted until this year. So since the budget cannot be adjusted, then it should come out of the personal budget that we already have. Because that's what I do at home. Like Dr. Bedden said, what would you do if you're at home? At home, I pay for everything my kids need first. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate Engel. I'm the parent of a John B. Carey second grader now. Last time I stood up here, it's been a couple of years. It was to urge you all to not vote for the rezoning that we all can see has, was a very hasty and poor decision. I'm sorry, Dr. Bedden, that you inherited a lot of this. I'm sorry, Dr. Bedden, that you inherited a lot of this. I just, I'm glad somebody just referred to the timing. I mean, the timing of the leveling, I'm sorry, if you've got to do it at the beginning of next year, fine. You don't do it after the start of a school year. I think that's just absurd as far as taking teachers out of a school. I actually do not agree with you, Mr. Marty Jewell, that we should be moving kids in the middle of a school year either. I guess, again, if you take them out of John B. Carey specifically, you're just going to have to put them back, because the reality is our poverty level is pretty darn high now, and so I think it's the 19 to 1 is the actual ratio that we should be working with. And I guess just on a personal slash professional level, I've heard what people have been saying about exceptional education. I work as a vocational counselor with people with disabilities. I've worked with transition age kids from Henrico, Chesterfield, and Richmond Public Schools. I'm here to tell you that if I had a kid with special needs, I'd be high tailing it to the counties. As committed as I am to sticking it out with Richmond Public Schools despite all of the poor decision-making, I'm sorry, but especially our kids with exceptional needs, they're really getting the short end of the stick in this district. So I urge you to listen to what everyone here is saying, frankly, because I think that a lot of the decisions that this Board has made over the years since I moved here three years ago, really just didn't take the community's concerns into consideration.
Good evening, Board members and Richmond administration, Dr. Bedden, Dr. Leonard, and all those here tonight. My name is Robin Major. I'm an 11-year teacher with Richmond Public Schools currently at John B. Carey, formerly Clark Springs. And my main concern tonight is that this leveling process is, this is just not an anomaly. This has happened every year since I've been in Richmond. And I'm glad I was here to hear the Chief of Richmond Police speak tonight, because I think that was kind of divine intervention in a way, that we're supposed to be the rock, the foundation, the stability. That's what we need to offer these children in order to prevent the high school years of truancy, delinquency, violence, when they've separated and they don't trust people, and they turn to, you know, things they shouldn't turn to. We need to be that rock for them. And by shuffling teachers around, shuffling kids around, year to year to year, that's not helping them emotionally, that's not helping them with their stability, it's not helping with student achievement. What is it helping with? I'm not understanding. It's helping with money coming in for something. Is that money going to K-2 education? I mean, money is the issue, we know this, but there has to be a better way. There's a better way in the surrounding counties, there's a better way in other cities. We have to collaborate and find a way.
30 seconds.
Thank you.
I want to thank all of our speakers for coming out tonight and speaking to us. Also, I want to thank you for being with us, because we had such a large number of people, and we wanted to hear from everyone. So, thank you for your cooperation. Ma'am Clerk.
The next item on the agenda is Item 4, Academic Improvement Items. 4.01 is a discussion on leveling.
Mr. Coleman, each of the Board members should have received a packet of information, so I put it up so everyone could see it. There were handouts, I think, made available. So, first thing I'd like to highlight is that, you know, I think that the second to the last speaker said it best, as far as administration-wise, I always tell people, "We're playing the hand of the cards that we have been dealt, and we're trying to make the best for all students." And I take that very seriously. As a parent of a student in the school district, as a parent who just had a special needs child graduate last year, so I lived it every year, who was diagnosed with multiple disabilities that they could not even figure out how to treat her, so we had to send her to a specialty school, and then another young lady who was very bright but also has challenges that require 504. So I live it every day as a parent. I will tell you, though, that the constant attacks about being a parent as a superintendent and where your child goes is oftentimes the reason superintendents don't want to put their children in the school system they work in, because it becomes unfair in the process. And I say that because if anybody knows me, one thing you won't cross the line on is my daughter. I will walk away from any job, any situation, for her well-being any given day, because that is the one gift that God has given me that I think is the best thing that ever happened to me, period. So any decision I make every day as a superintendent also impacts her. And quite honestly, if you want to have some fun, there are days I get to sleep on the couch when my wife doesn't like my decisions as superintendent. So I get it at home, because I will always do what I think is best for children in the entire district. So, the school division has chosen to be a part of the K-3 primary class size reduction program. And I say that because it is a choice. Through the budgetary process, we built in, at minimum, out of the $6.3 million, the receipt of $4.5 million in the budget that you passed to receive. Because as you will see later, and I think someone referenced it, the history, as we look at the data in this district, is we've not been able to acquire the maximum amount of funds, partially because of facilities challenges. Oftentimes, it's been one of the biggest limitations. So as you know, the state says the school divisions that will participate in the program must provide data to the Department of Ed indicating that participating schools meet the funding criteria. So if we participate, we don't get latitude in that situation. It is a choice. You know, I agree with, this is the worst time. That's why we went after leveling in our secondary schools, because we could base it on scheduling, and then try to tell teachers before they leave so they can move to the schools and be there to receive the students. We are still trying to address what happens at elementary. The program requirements don't kick in until unfortunately September 30th. That is official date that we have to use to determine where we are in the process and what data we'll be using by October 15th to submit to the state. The process, because of that, did not allow an opportunity to communicate more or sooner to teachers prior to that. Then when teachers, when we had the concrete potential numbers from HR to indicate what the leveling process for meeting the K-3 primary class size would entail, the first part of that process means communicating to the school, and then the school communicating to the teachers. But the first thing we do is seek volunteers. We don't force it. So the schools had until last Wednesday to respond if they had any volunteers, and then if they don't, then it goes into what we call a seniority system, and it's based on your seniority in the entire school division. So we would not have notified parents yet or anyone, because we did not actually know who would be those teachers, because we had to get feedback if they were volunteers first before we trigger the seniority process. Additionally, and I'm, you know, you read this, I'm not going to cover everything line item by line item. You know, once we receive the information, once we submit our information to the state, you know, they go through a process of review based on our September 30th data, and then also they do an analysis to determine whether you've met the standard. The state determines what the free lunch rate is. It does not include free and reduced lunch, and they assign a free lunch rate, in this case, as the parents indicated, on 2012. Part of that is driven by that we do a biennium budget system. So they do a average of three years, and in this case, they did an average of three years based on 2010, 2011, and 2012 to determine the free lunch rate for the schools. It is very accurate what was shared, that we had one significant anomaly in the process, which is John B. Carey. John B. Carey is at 44 point something percent based on the 2012 data, and I understand in 2013 was when the change was made. John B. Carey's, if they were applied the new rate, John B. Carey actually would be in a different category. They would fall, because it's not free reduced lunch rate, it's only free rate, free lunch, Carey would actually fall probably in the 17 to 1 ratio of 55 to 65 percent, because you have to take out the reduced rate in the process. You also receive the impact on what that meant for us. 26 schools are considered, the state does the assessment for the free lunch. In our case, 23 schools were determined to be eligible. 16 of those schools potentially involved in this process. So 16 out of the 26 schools are involved in this process ultimately, meaning that 12 of them need additional teachers for us to qualify and receive at least the $4.5 million up to $6.3 million funding. The four schools, there are four schools that are impacted with losing, 12 receiving. The three schools that are not qualified to participate in this program are Fox, Munford, and Patrick Henry are not eligible to participate. I think this past Friday, we turned in our data after going through a scrubbing process with the state. The state now will go about determining what standards we have met and what standards we did not meet. When they, they then will send back a report to us saying this classroom, this school has not met the standard, and then you have those responses that you're allowed to give. It's hire K-3 staff, eliminate a grade, accept so on, and then for class size cap are the choices. We did see clarification for any type of waiver, consideration from the state, and you heard in the State Deputy Superintendent of Schools, Kent Dickey did respond to our Budget Office, and I'm not going to read it, his response is there. Basically, what he said is, unless there is something done at the state level to change the budgetary process, there is nothing that can be done, because it is applied to all 181, or 87, I think, school divisions in the Commonwealth. I did, after attending one event, make it over to John B. Carey, as the parents said it was a very emotional meeting. Mrs. Granger took notes, so I sat down and tried to capture responses to the comments that she was able to capture. I have included that, because I thought it was important for parents to get a response to those, you know. One of the significant ones was as parents asked, "Why couldn't the K-3 teachers move to 4th and 5th grade?" This process is only focusing on the K-3 class size reduction and where the funding is allocated for. Can we wait until next year? Absolutely. It is a choice to participate. We could, if for every classroom or school that does not meet the qualifications, they will reduce the allocation that they would have given us. So, right off the bat, every, you know, we start subtracting from the $6.3 million, which we know probably, when you see the choices of option, we won't be able to get all $6.3 million, if nothing else, just because of the facility challenges that we have. And I'm not going to read all of these, you know, you have those. There was a question about special ed. Special ed is done separately, is not a part of this process with K-3, so those, that's not a factor included in this process. Why can't we hire more teachers? This process requires about 30 additional teachers. For us, that would be about $2.1 million to purchase 30 of them. We no longer have a, what we call, carryover reserve. As the years have continued to pass, that little bit of money that we're allowed to hold on to from the city has been done previously to purchase more teachers and draw down from that. That does not exist. 85% of our budget goes towards people and personnel. Analysis of the budget would show that 77% of it goes towards instruction on the operating And I'm just highlighting some key things. Interesting that we looked at, one parent asked, "What happened to all the teachers since schools have closed and those types of things?" Since 2009, counting all funds, Richmond Public Schools is actually down 91 teachers compared to 2009, and we have 450 more students than we've had, have more, 450 more students now than we do in 2009. So we actually have fewer teachers available to us. An analysis today also we did in looking at a couple peer districts, Newport News and Norfolk, we found that those two divisions actually are back at their, or exceeding their 2009 funding level that they were at, and of course, RPS is not at its 2009 funding level. The recession, the 2009 is why that is chosen. So, to try to address it, we have Level 1 action, which obviously is to reassign the 10 teachers, which has no cost to RPS. You just redirect the resources, or you can do some portion of that. There are classroom spaces for eight of them available, because we did look at, you know, the situation with where can a teacher actually have a class. There is the ability to bring in, from Francis, two Francis from Swansboro, the two portables, which will provide 10 classroom spaces for teachers to teach in and not share. The note there is true what has been spoken earlier. I suspect that John B. Carey, when they do this next biennium, their free lunch rate will go up, probably at least around 10 to 15 percentage points. So, the next biennium, they will be in a very different place when the state updates the numbers for this coming year. The Level 2 phase would be, in addition to doing Level 1, RPS could attempt to hire 11 teachers, or some option of those number of 11, depending on what we want to stretch and gamble with, with the budget, which you know is a challenge already, because we were not fully funded, as we had hoped. If you did all 11, that cost would be about $770,000 that we would have to acquire. We would get some portion of that back from the state. We won't know that until the state does this analysis and determine which classes have met the threshold, so they will give you some portion of that money back to the school district for meeting the class, K-3 class size reduction. Because no classroom space exists for those teachers, facilities would take out of the capital funds and purchase portables, like the ones you've seen at Broad Rock, to house six teachers at Miles Jones, to accommodate Broad Rock and Oak Grove for the 2 and 3 teachers. Facilities would then work to try to activate and get Roughing Road up and running to house pre-K, which would then free up classrooms within those buildings. Level 3 recommends not doing anything at the outlined schools there, because we have nowhere to put them, other than stick them in the classroom with someone else, which is the least of my comfortable results, because team teaching is not something you just throw people together. Any educator would tell you that it's a process you go through, and if it's not the right to people, or they have not gone through training to team teach, it is a challenge. It is also a concern that without looking at the actual classroom makeup in those buildings, it could be more problematic also, without physically walking the buildings and see about the room arrangement and ability for two teachers to function and support each other in the classroom. So that would leave Chembrazo, Stewart, Mason, and Westover, as is. I have had the staff pull the numbers, they don't all look bad, it's just they won't qualify for the class size reduction funding. There is a couple of schools there that would probably benefit from having at least an aide, because at least all of those have at least one classroom that we consider large, and could potentially use an aide to support the teacher in the classroom as another least expensive way to provide support, potentially. So, some of the reasons why this is happening. One is we have to continue to work on our data management, which we have done, because that was one of the reasons you purchased Aspen. The Budget Office says it is significantly more accurate and improved compared to the past, but we also have to work on the people. SysOps, no matter what system we buy, if we have bad data put in, we'll get bad information. And as part of this budgetary cycle, you will be receiving information and proposals for the upgrading of those positions, because we're upgrading the qualifications and expectations of performance of those positions, because it has a significant impact on funding of the school district, and also meeting the needs of our students with course registrations. On the financial side, there, you know, we had the looming challenge with our special ed CEIS program having to come back to the general fund, so that's going to create a challenge for us. We need, the need for contingency staffing. Because we no longer have that reserve, I will be recommending that we have in the budget, hopefully it'll stay, at least 10 to 15 positions for this very reason, is what most districts do. In my last district, I would always have at least enough money for 10 positions, so that's what we do. that we could go out and add as we, enrollment shift. One of the challenges we're going to have at this later date of hiring teachers, just to be transparent, is who's available? And if they are available, why weren't they hired earlier? And you can read between the lines. And then, then of course, we would recommend the implementation of the Plannings Factors document that we shared with you early this year is the new model. If we implement and take these standards and put that into the Plannings Factors document process, I believe it would reduce, if not potentially eliminate, how much movement we have in the fall, with this caveat, obviously, we can't control our student movement. But, we would probably decrease the number if we use this staffing model as we develop the budget for schools. And of course, the albatross that's in the room that'll be addressed earlier is that we have got to address our facilities. We need to take action on the Facility Needs Report and also address the zoning situation to help with this situation. And then finally, the other big piece is transportation. We typically have been spending about two million more than what is budgeted for transportation. We did ask for the true dollar amount, but the truth of the matter is, because we have not used the hub system that Mr. Krantz said was originally planned to be used, and we give a lot of neighborhood and door-to-door service, we're spending a lot of money on transportation that would and could be going into the classroom. And that's another place where we have to fine tune. Our operational costs are eating up money that could be in instructional programs, and that's something that we're going to have to really address and get a handle on. The final piece you received is that, you know, to be in compliant with caseload requirements, just like last year, students have moved, students have transferred to other schools, so we need to redirect special ed staff to those schools to make sure that those students are receiving their services, to be in compliant with special ed law. I will tell you that also, you received the report, we're the first district to voluntarily go through the new model for special ed review in the state. So, we do take seriously our services to special ed students, and quite honestly, usually I get parents from surrounding jurisdictions who compliment what we do compared to the other surrounding jurisdictions. Now, does that mean we don't have room to get better? Absolutely not. We have a lot of room to continue to get better, and we'll, we'll continue to work to get better, which is why we did a voluntary review with VDOE this year that wasn't required. But this impacts at least fifteen teachers to make sure that we are meeting the caseload requirements and the standards outlined by state and federal code. So, all this information you, sorry about this. Previous received, so if you, I was asked a question by one of your colleagues, what would happen if we use the new numbers at Carey? Carey would most likely, like I said, be at twenty-two to one max, twenty-two to one max ratio, so they would still be losing at least two teachers in this process, but not all four with the new, if you use the current numbers that we have for free reduced lunch. Looming in this process, the catch-up, the hiccup on the CEP part, which I still think was the right thing to do to feed all our kids, is the state and federal government are still working very hard to figure out, because they use free lunch, what are you going to calculate now? And we keep pressing them. We did it again last week, and the U.S. Secretary of Agriculture, every time he visits with us, I bring that same thing up. What standard are you going to use going forward after this biennium? Because we won't have any free reduced lunch numbers, because we don't collect that information anymore. So, that's another thing that we have shared. We've shared it with Secretary Holden, State Superintendent Staples, and the governor when he's talked to me, and the First Lady. So, that is another looming thing that is on our radar to address that. And we have been a leader in the CEP program, and I think it's been well-received. We have a couple pilot schools that'll be going online to actually serve dinner coming up soon. So, the board, it is a local decision what to do with these options. At the end of the day, all the state does is evaluate whether we are in compliance and make a decision about how much funding we receive.
Ms. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Based on the information that we've been provided, and thank you so much, Dr. Betton, for putting this report together. Having received this report, though, I think it was around a quarter till eight o'clock on Friday evening, and with this being Monday evening, it's no way in the world I feel like this board can properly make, do a full assessment and move forward with the recommendations, and therefore, I am making a motion to not accept any of the three recommendations and instead move to bring the leveling process to a complete halt until after this 2015-16 school year.
And I would, as required by Virginia Code and by your board policy to advise you financially, if you do that, you will have a 4.5 million dollar hole in your budget added to what we have already.
Can I get a second?
A second.
And just to go on, this, this clearly, all the implications of this recommendation to level the schools is a direct result of the rezoning in MAP-C that occurred in 2012, and Dr. Betton, I understand completely that that was done prior to your tenure, but the end result is that we will put in that place in 2013. We did nothing about it for the rest of 2013. We did nothing to address the issue, as many times as I have personally brought it to the table, we did nothing to address this matter for all of 2015, and it is now October, and we're now deciding that we want to bring back millions of dollars that we haven't even considered in this budget on the backs of children. It is in my, it is my belief, and it's, I am of the opinion, that our children are worth far more than the 2.2 million dollars that we lost, that we didn't have to lose, but we lost because of the MAP-C that was brought forth by this board majority. And so, I therefore feel like our children do not need to have teachers snatched away from them when they're already struggling, that we don't need to have teachers who've already developed lesson plans, developed relationships, and be moved over for a possibility of a few million dollars, which in a multimillion-dollar budget like we operate is basically a drop in the bucket. So, we can move forward with this process, but to not implement it until after this 2015-2016 school year would be my recommendation.
Additionally, board members, the other challenge you will have is not only will you grow this challenge to the other schools, because remember, the other schools are, some have twenty-six, twenty-seven students in a class. So, this process is just not about money. It's about class size and teacher effectiveness and ability. As I said earlier, you have twelve schools that are in need of support, and four that are losing some support. And again, the timing, I absolutely agree with the parents, don't like it, but I also have to make you aware that twelve schools are challenged without support. And K-3 is significant. If we, as we continue to work to make sure that all students are leaving third grade on or above grade level, and we know they predict prison population by third grade performance, it is huge. And this process, again, has been done, as one parent mentioned, this is not new. One teacher, excuse me, mentioned, so it's not like it's something new. I think we're probably being more public and transparent about it in the process.
Okay, there was a motion, there was a second. We are in discussion. Ms. Mohammed.
Dr. Betton, thank you so very much for getting us the information. Thank you, Dr. Leonard, and other cabinet members, that I know you all had a very urgent meeting after the Carey parent meeting and making sure that the data that we were using was accurate from the State Department of Information, the State Department of Education. So, I appreciate the time and effort, I really do. I also feel your pain as a super, well, not as a superintendent, but as a parent and as an educator, having a child attend school in your district. So, I do understand your plight with that. I have a couple of things that I just want to share with everyone who was here. I have tried to be very transparent in how I feel about this process, and I just want to go over some of the things that I shared at Carey Elementary School at, last week at the meeting. A couple of parents, and I don't know if it was directed to every board member or not, but I'm a ride-or-die type of educator. I'm going to fight for every child. I'm just not going to choose children to stand for. So, I just want to make that very clear. When someone says to me that I am not serving all children, then apparently you haven't seen some of the bruises that I've had since 2013. I serve every child. So, I just want to make that, I want to make sure that we are clear on that and that you've heard it from me. I want to share with our staff, that our teachers that are here, I understand 100,000 million percent how you feel, because I'm an educator. Nobody wants to be moved in the middle of a school year. If no other board member has said it to you or shared it with you, I am going to say it. You do not sign a contract to a school. You sign a contract to the district. And I confirmed that with the attorney before I said it. I know that hurts, and I know it doesn't feel good, but I can't rightfully, as an educator, stand for one and don't stand for the other schools. I will have to explain that to the people that I work with. It just doesn't make sense. The other thing, because I know our time is short, I agree with my colleague from the Fifth District. We are where we are because of an era of judgment that this board made in 2013. I admit that, I own it, I didn't vote for it, but this is where we are. So, we have to do what's best for every child at Richmond City Public Schools, and I'm going to do that. May I finish, Mr. Chairman?
Close your thought.
Okay, Ms. Peake Meaps just said I can have her time. Is that two minutes?
No, it's not.
How, I just want to know.
You close your thought.
So, I can't have her time?
Just go ahead.
Oh, close my thought, okay, close my thought. Um, I cannot rightfully say that we cannot, I can't move, I cannot say I'm not going to move forward with balancing the population in our district so our other children will not receive equitable funding. I can't, I can't do that, not after I spent nineteen years of my life in public education. Is the timing off? Is the timing inaccurate? There's a whole lot of funkiness with this timing, absolutely. But I cannot say that I am going to not allow something to happen over here so we won't have children over here have a balanced classroom. If you have a solution to that, I'm ready to hear. My last thought. Children are resilient, I want you to remember that. Children are resilient. Research speaks to the benefits of smaller class sizes. I don't have to share with you all, my colleagues, what that research says. But what I am going to tell you, and this is my closing thought for real, what I am going to say to you, I'm going to stand on the side of children every time, every time. And whoever told the person they can't call a school board member, that's not factual. You call me at 908-4590. He may not be here, but I don't know who said that, but you can call any school board member on this board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Jones.
I don't really like being, you know, I feel like we're under the gun with this. It would have been, and I understand the timelines and timeframes, you know, I would have certainly loved to have had this information before now, but we are where we are, and, you know, I'm looking at the data, you know, and I know the data from 2012 is what we have to use. I know that we stand to lose 6.3 in funding, but I just, you know, I'll be honest, I don't feel like we can level our way out of this. I really feel like we're going to have to do the hard work of rezoning and paying attention to the facilities report. You know, so I really feel like this is a Band-Aid, and so, I mean, I'm not really excited about supporting this. And I guess I'm open to some compromise and some alternative, you know, because I should, I should be thrilled, because the way this looks, you know, schools in my district get two and three teachers respectively from this. But, it just, it doesn't feel right to take these teachers out. And I'm, and we're going to have to reconcile that, and I get that. And I know that we can't do nothing, but we're going to have to make a difficult decision, but I mean, and so I don't know if we can do something where we don't, you know, take, take all of the teachers out, maybe we can take a few of them, you know, because I recognize that this has implications across the district, but I'm just trying not to kill Carey, you know, and so, you know, I'm open to hear, I mean, I've heard some alternatives here, but I just feel like there's another alternative somewhere that we haven't drilled down on. And if, if, if I have to support halting it in order to drill down on something better than what I've heard, then I will. If I can hear something tonight that's better than this, then I'll support, then I'll, I'll think about that. I just, it's got to be something else. That's where I am right now.
Dr. Betton. I do want, the team wanted me to remind the board that whatever you decide, I hope that you would keep the K-3 conversation specific to it and separate from special ed, because that opens another whole ball of wax. So, I'm not sure what Mrs. Taylor's motion was, but the other issue that if you stop the whole thing, we actually didn't violate, truly violate federal law on the special ed side with that piece. So, we need to make sure that whatever we're working on here, we're clear about if it's the K-3 issue or special ed, because you know, we had to address special ed last year also. As far as, you know, one of the things that you look at, Dr. Jones, in that challenging situation is, you know, three, we took off the board because it required, you know, teachers having to be, even if we addressed those schools' needs, we didn't have anywhere to put them, so that's why we took that off. So, it wasn't like, we liked one school better than others, just like you had nowhere to put them. You know, you have the option, the second part of two requires expending of funds to make it happen with regards to, you know, spending money and then doing work. My challenge with it, quite honestly, is, but I wanted to make you all aware, is we got more days growing with, because of work they'd have to do at Roughing, Roughing Road just to even get it open. So, it's not even an attractive one, but it was, again, not putting teachers stuck together when they haven't had time to plan, prepare, is just not a good model without the preparation. So, that's why it was just put there. So, you know, the cleanest one, obviously, it starts off with eight classrooms. There are eight that are ready now, period, that a teacher could walk into and address the children and the school's needs. I would tell you that on the Carey thing specifically, again, there's a high likelihood that you'll, we turn around and be adding teachers if you use the current numbers, unless their enrollment goes down, and I, you know, so, but if it stays... their enrollment goes down and I, you know, I don't, so, but if it stays the same or continues and the pattern is going, they are gonna have a higher, so, they would only typically be losing two teachers if you use the new numbers as opposed to four. Uh, you know, I just spoke to Ralph and said, do you have any idea of what the impact is if we do portions of it? And he says, you don't know until you turn in the data and then they respond, and then you make an informed decision about it. But we typically have not been able to because of facilities get the, so, we're not gonna get to 6.3 no matter what. I mean, there's no way, just by when I took off the three schools at the bottom, because we don't have the space. And when they pull the data, they budgeted for what we typically have got on average in the past, which is about 4.5. We will turn in all the numbers and they will respond. We, we could be there right now and have plugged a hole. We don't know until they respond. So, as I understand it, Ralph, you could, if you do nothing, we could lose money or we could be okay, correct? We don't know until they respond. The negative of that is also more time going, because you have until December to get it, to fix whatever holes you have. So, the very thing where we don't like now is now you're getting longer with teachers being there and, you know, unless, nothing about it is good, that's why I think the planning factors document, we've got to do more on the front end to, to minimize this, and you're right, that's why I put the notes there, you're dead on. We have got to do the heavy lifting with our zoning and our facilities plan, and it's not about just, it's why we gave you all functional versus true capacity, because functional is about where the true seats are and not just what a building design said it could hold, because you always want to leave space for unexpected growth, which is what has happened in our south side. But then we got to develop not only a feeder pattern, but also then what we call second and third tier, when you say, in my last district, we would stop enrollment at a certain point and say, all students after this point go to the second-tier zone school so that we don't run into this problem also.
I know.
Ralph, you have a comment?
I appreciate that, Dr. Bennet. I, I do.
It's just that we budgeted, as you said, four and a half million dollars, so we didn't plan on being able to get all of the money this year because, partly because of the physical restrictions and stuff, but it really all depends on how it falls out in terms of where the kids show up versus where the teachers are. So, until we go through that review with the state, we're not gonna know exactly what we, we always try to qualify for the maximum amount of funding we can based on the configuration we have, but, so, we know what we have now, we know what we could possibly do to increase our possibilities of maximizing that state revenue without having to spend any more local revenue. We don't have any more local money to spend. So, that's the, the catch-22. I mean, we can, we know we can move some people and maximize the services to kids and have the money to cover it from the state. If we don't do that, then we're in jeopardy potentially of losing money beyond what we projected in the budget, the four and a half million. We may get less than that, and then the question is, where do we make up that money? Yes, ma'am.
What did your projection show last year for 2014?
About the same.
About the same? And what did we gain from that?
Pardon?
What you projected, what were our gains?
Uh, you mean budget versus actual? What did we actually get versus what we budgeted last year?
Based on the student, K through three, kindergarten, teacher, student ratio.
We came in close to what we budgeted on it last, for the last year.
So, we had, we actually had a gain?
No.
Because I'm just trying to figure out if nothing has changed since 2013.
Oh, it's, it's changed. No, what's changed is the, is the, is the class sizes, where the kids show up and where the teachers are, that's what changes from year to year. The funding mechanism hasn't changed at all. It's the same, and the state's not changing it until 17, until July 1 of next year with the new parameters that the state will put into the benchmarking and recalculating all of their per pupil costs that they're gonna allocate, and the General Assembly will approve this budget cycle in the spring. So, we're living with, for the last two years, the same parameters, nothing's changed. So, the only thing that changes is in the building and what your, what the configuration is of student-teacher ratio, which then determines what your funding eligibility is and whether you're one class off or two classes off, that's what affects the funding. So, the formula doesn't change, it's the kids and the configuration of the teachers that change year to year, and that's what impacts our funding.
Okay.
Okay, I got this for, just for, just for further clarity, could you just show me those figures comparatively speaking from last year versus this year and so that I can see what has changed dynamically in the classroom?
What's changed this year?
Between last year and this year.
The only thing that's gonna change is those, is those enrollments by school by grade level.
Since the rezoning of 2013, basically, what I want to see are the student-teacher ratios from that point of rezoning to now and, and the direct impact of the federal grant funding and what we have gained in funding as a result of the changes or no lack of changes.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Taylor.
Yeah, we don't have those by, by class. We don't, you mean this evening?
No, 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 no.
You want to see it?
Exactly.
Sure, okay.
Okay, um, is that your hand this episode?
It is.
You have one minute, because you gave your time away.
I appreciate that.
All right.
I'll take my one minute. I'd like for us to consider, as well though, and I appreciate, Dr. Bennet, that you are responding, but are we gonna time the superintendent too? Okay, um, I'm looking at this Esco, does this leveling only involve teachers? And I'm asking that because there was a, one of the individuals that came to the microphone earlier said she doesn't even have a nurse at her particular school. And so, then when I look at this SOQ stuff, it starts talking about these full-time equivalents based on your fall membership, and it speaks to principals, assistant principals, librarians, guidance counselors. Is all of that a part of this or we just dealing?
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
K3 is about teachers. The K3 class size is only about dealing with teachers.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, could you restate the motion, please?
Ms. Taylor's motion was to not accept any of the recommendation of, recommendations of the administration as it relates to leveling and thereby to bring the leveling process to a halt until the end of the 2015, 2016 school year, and it was seconded by Ms. Pinkney Epps.
Is there any more discussion?
I, I would like to know if Mrs. Taylor would be open to a friendly amendment, but I think I would need to come over to the superintendent first to share with you what I'm gonna say to see if it makes sense. Can I have thirty-two seconds?
Go ahead, Ms. Mahomet.
Mr. Chairman?
I just wanted to just say that I'm open to that friendly amendment. Basically, what you're asking me to do is co-sign to losing two teachers instead of four teachers, and you're talking about data that's based on 2012. And no matter how unfortunate that is, the only problem, the, the problem rests on the lapse of students. So, if you're saying that these, these classrooms that were once consumed with children, that were at a 44 percentile for poverty are now at a 69%, and you're saying that, okay, well, it's okay to take away two teachers? No, it's not okay, not when you haven't had a discussion about this since the redistricting of 2013 and it's now the end of 2015. So, what I am willing to do is to add on to my motion that the administration prepare two additional recommendations by our next board meeting, since we have until December 1st, I believe, to bring this to the state, to come back to the board with two additional recommendations, and then we can decide then.
Okay, Madam Attorney, help me out here. We have a motion on the floor. Are you?
Yeah, I'm saying that I'm not accepting the recommendations of the superintendent that have been presented thus far and that no changes that would allow classrooms to lose teachers would be implemented for the remainder of the school year.
Okay.
That remains the same.
All right, Ms. Taylor, let's, let's, let's do this.
I, I haven't finished my thought, though. I just wanted to make sure that you all have full clarity on what I'm trying to say, and I don't want to.
Okay, but there's, there's, there's a process. Are you, do you want, are you, the amendment has been on the floor second.
There, there is no amendment on the floor.
I mean, I'm sorry, not the amendment, the motion was on the floor and said, are you saying you want to amend your motion?
That's what I'm saying, I'm willing to make an amendment to my own motion that would allow the superintendent to come back to the board with two additional recommendations that will resolve the fact that we are trying to make a decision on bad data from 2012. That is not ours, John B. Kerry does not have the statistics that are being presented. Am I not correct on that?
Okay.
So.
Dr. Bennet just made a comment that you could hear.
The, the, the data that the state uses doesn't change. I've already given you what the, the impact would be if you used current year's data. They would probably lose two teachers still. It's only free lunch that will put them between 55 and 65, and that still would have put them at losing two teachers if, if you internally decide to use the up-to-date data.
Mr. Westbury had a comment.
Yes, sir, I just wanted to also say that the exceptional education leveling is about compliance, and it's a whole separate issue from the K3 class, so I just want to make sure that was clear.
That's why we gotta pull it out. That's what I was trying to say, I'm just saying. I understand all of that, all of that.
Call the question, Mr. Chair, please.
I'm, I'm still in the middle of call, I'm still in the middle of making a statement for, just for clarification. If you're saying that John B. Kerry is losing, still would lose two teachers, then are you, what is this, what is it for Swansboro? Would they still be losing two teachers or would they be losing less based on the data? If this information is inaccurate or?
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Mr. Coleman, I'm not asking.
There's been a call for the question.
I'm not asking.
I have to follow procedures.
In the middle of.
You can't just talk, Ms. Taylor.
But I was, I was still talking.
That's, that's the Robert's Rules of Order. Someone has called for a question.
I understand your practices. Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you, all right.
Can Mrs. Taylor finish her thought, please, Mr. Coleman, if you don't mind?
This is the practice as only, if I were, relates to myself.
Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Mahomet.
I am.
Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor, you can finish your thought.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, again.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. How much time does she have? She has 30 seconds. Thank you.
Okay, can you please wait until I start talking before you start to talk? Okay. Basically, what I'm trying to say is that there are schools across the district that we are making a decision on, and I would still like to see the process halted because of how it was presented to the community and how it was presented to the board. So, what I'm asking is that the superintendent and his administration come back with two additional recommendations by the next board meeting, and if nothing else, we consider going back to redistricting and correcting the errors that were made in 2013.
So, once again, I'm trying.
Question was called and that was seconded, so you all need to vote on whether or not you're going to end debate and call the question.
Madam Clerk.
Who called the question, I'm sorry.
Ms. Gray called the question, it was seconded by Mr. Born.
Thank you.
And the vote to end the debate, Mr. Sturdeman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mahomet?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
No.
Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one. Mrs. Taylor's motion on the floor is to not accept any of the recommendations of the administration as it relates to leveling and thereby to bring the leveling process to a halt until the end of the 2015, 2016 school year, and that was seconded by Ms. Pinkney Epps. Mr. Sturdeman?
No.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Born?
No.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mahomet?
No.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Motion fails six, three.
Mr. Born?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we are all aware, these decisions are not made lightly because they're important. The most important thing I think all of us could agree on, and there's not much, it doesn't feel like sometimes that we could agree on, is having a, a good quality teacher in front of our, our students. However, we have to balance that and make sure we're making those decisions in the context of the law, our fiscal realities, and what's good not for but one school, but for the school division as a whole. And so, while this is not a perfect situation, it is not one that any of us would want to go through, it's one that I believe we must. Many times over history of Richmond Public Schools, decisions have been made that we continue to bear the burden of, and this, I think, is another one of those. So, with, having said all that, and I won't belabor the point any further, I would move that we continue with the leveling process as outlined generally. However, I do think that us making an affirmative decision, a step to not look at the 12 data but the current data with respect to free, free lunch population is the, is the fairest, the most equitable way to go about this, and so, that's what I would urge us to do, and that's what I would move, apply the current free, free lunch rate to the, as I think Dr. Bennet described it, the one anomaly throughout our school system.
Mr. Born, if you may, can you say your motion again?
Sure.
Without the extra, I just want to be able to.
Sure. So, I would move that we move, move the leveling process forward, and for the one anomaly, John B. Kerry Elementary School applied their current free lunch rate, which would thereby mean a loss of only two teachers.
Second.
Are you open to a friendly amendment? Is, is that still including the process of leveling special ed? I don't think we, we clearly understand, we gotta move that out because of compliance. So, do we need to say that? That's what I'm most concerned about, I mean, I'm concerned about a lot, but.
I, I don't want to do anything that gets us out of compliance, so if we need to say, if I need to restate it and say, including the special ed leveling, compliance.
That's why I'm asking, are we, I see some heads going yes, no, he just moved, okay. So, if we don't specify, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity, if we don't specify that piece of special ed, we're good? I just want to, I just want to clarify before I vote.
You want me to just, yeah, it's for all, the whole thing.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are we waiting on the discussion period?
Yeah, we're gonna have a discussion. They're just getting the motion clear. All right, we have a motion that was made and seconded. Madam Clerk, could you restate that motion, please?
Mr. Born made the motion. It was seconded by Ms. Gray. To continue leveling as recommended by the superintendent, except that we apply current free lunch percent at John B. Carey Elementary, which requires moving two teachers.
Can we change that to most recent data? Because that's not current. We don't collect the free and reduced.
Mm-hmm, most recent data.
Okay, colleagues. One of the things, again, because we've had some extensive debate here, our time is still limited. What I'm gonna do during discussion, I'll give everybody a minute during discussion. One minute. Ms. Larson, followed by Dr. Jones.
Mr. Coleman, you're killing me. I ask the superintendent and the board to also take a look at the poverty levels at Fisher and Southampton because they had significant population changes during the rezoning that we did in 2013. And I'd also support, as Dr. Ben mentioned, moving forward in our next budget to have contingency money set aside so that if this were to happen, which has happened for many years...
Thirty seconds.
That we would have money in reserve that we could use. I also think that we, as a board, should look at sending a letter to the state talking about this experience and expressing the problems that we have when you don't use the most recent poverty numbers and the impact it could have on a school to see if we can get any changes made. And just a clarifying question, Dr. Ben. At Westover, it says, in the plan that you all laid forward, that there's not enough facility space for two teachers. But in the bigger chart, it had three teachers. Does that mean they'll be getting one teacher?
I'm gonna guess without talking to me, that's probably a typo on my part.
Oh.
He told me there was no space at all.
Okay.
So there's no space, is what he's saying. He's nodding over there. So that's just a keystroke on my part in typing it.
Okay.
All right, Dr. Jones.
Am I correct that I heard the superintendent say, if we use the 2013 data, the likelihood would be that Carey would be, would have lost two teachers anyway, if we use that? And when you talk about likelihood, great likely, I mean, what do we mean by that?
I say that because their free and reduced lunch rate is coming in at about sixty-nine. You take out the reduce, it's probably gonna mean their free is gonna fall between fifty-five and sixty-five.
Okay.
So I'm pretty certain, but I have to pull it because their free and reduce together were sixty-nine. So you gotta take out the reduce and just get the pure free.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
I'm sorry, I know, you're right.
All right, Ms...
Thank you. I just really want to challenge us to complete, what we're gonna have to do is undo the rezoning that we did. We're gonna have to rezone properly, again, with our facility study at the table. Because if we continue to tiptoe around how rezoning is supposed to be done on every level, elementary and secondary, we're gonna come back to this discussion every year. So I am saying, one more time, that we are going to have to sit down...
Thirty seconds.
And rezone the entire district. We started elementary. Some issues are with that that are coming to play right now. We have never touched secondary. Just to whip it down a fact, when you do not use a study that was paid for for over $200,000 that was accurate, and this is where we are. So we are going to have to sit down and get it done so it can be fair and equitable across the district.
Ms. Taylor.
It is only fair and equitable if we stop this process now. You're still talking about seven to eight weeks into the school year, and our students deserve better. I cannot support something that moves students this time of year. Again, why weren't we having this discussion prior to now? Why two years later? And you're talking about making special provisions for John B. Carey, but what about Swansboro? Can I see the Swansboro family stand up, please? These are the people that you're impacting. These are the people that you're impacting, and all of the students that they serve.
Thirty seconds.
So I ask you to please support the motion that I put forward earlier. Let's go get back to that and address this for the 2016, 2017 school year, when we can do what we were put into office to do in the first place, to serve people, not make political moves that would take us up to the next level, but to serve children who deserve better than to have students snatched out of their classroom, or teachers snatched out of the classrooms of students six to seven weeks into the school year, when they've already developed relationships. You would not have it done to your children. I would not want it done to my child, and they shouldn't have it done to their students. Thank you.
Ms. Epps.
I need some clarification. I'm hearing a lot of discussion about, what is it, special education? In using Carey as the example, are any of those teachers collaborative teachers such that they're having special education children mainstreamed into those classrooms? And will that have any impact on the children?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board. The leveling that was shown on the first number of pages is just respective to general education teachers. There may be students with disabilities in some of those classes. However, calculations for students with disabilities is separate, and that's why we wanted to make sure we distinguished it on that last page from the general ed section. So there could be students with disabilities in the general education classrooms, but that's been accounted for, and that's what the staff are looking at, the numbers. So there wouldn't be, if a Carey teacher was moved, first, Carey's not losing any special education teachers, and we shared that with the staff prior to, or with Dr. Leonard prior to the meeting with the faculty. So just in case they didn't know that information. So no special ed staff is being adjusted there. And if they do move their teachers, the general ed teachers, we're still in caseload compliance with the special education component because we've checked out with every school. And the folks that need adjustments are reflected on that last page.
And the follow-up to that is the movement that's gonna happen at Francis and Green. They're gaining these teachers. Is that because of their ELL population?
What you see is strictly K-3 by the free lunch and the ratios we have to meet by state mandate. So for instance, U.S. Green is required to have the largest class size of nineteen to one. And so they're gaining four teachers to, and they need them in grades, kindergarten, second, and third.
And...
Two in kindergarten, it would be two in kindergarten, excuse me. One in kindergarten, looks like two in second grade and one in third grade would be what they would gain if we were able to move them.
And so are any of those classes heavy, heavily populated with ELL students? Such that a teacher needs to be a special teacher that's in the class?
It could be. I mean, a student, ELL student can be in a regular class. But this is strictly about the size of the K-3. You don't do, unless a student is being, getting intensive ELL services, then they wouldn't be. But if they're not, and they're in there, that's what they would be. It depends on a student's level of English language evaluation. It's all based on a language survey.
As, I'm looking at this SOQ, and it's saying that...
Go ahead.
Because of the, there's some, you have to have certain teachers, you have to have teachers in certain classes, I guess, because of the ELL populations. Let me find it.
Ms. Gray?
I just want to speak to the state and that this is not something that's new, obviously. It's gone on year after year. And it's not about starving one and feeding others. It's about making sure everybody, every child gets an opportunity to have those class ratios that we know work best for them. With the exception of this school year, and I've been a RPS parent for more than twenty years continuously, this is the first year that I haven't had a child impacted personally.
Thirty seconds.
So this is, this is an issue that is personal to me. It's not easy, but our children are resilient, and they do overcome change that happens. I think parents sometimes have more difficulties than children. But what I'm looking at, what is gained weighed against, you know, moving some teachers and having some adjustments go on. And this, the counts don't go in until this time of year. So we don't have an ability to do it any sooner. It's just what, what we have to do to make it best for all students in the city.
Mr. Coleman?
Yeah, I want to just echo, had opportunity to be there on Thursday night. And the reality of this is, it's, it's hard. And Richmond's ghost and past decisions and all that continue to affect us. But in this situation, I also believe we continue to have an opportunity to try to move forward. And I hope everyone can see this board is awakened to this process and definitely making sure this administration...
Thirty seconds.
Helps us as we move forward with this to, to try our best to have the leveling process impact fewer number. I appreciate Mr. Born's motion because one of the things I felt about Thursday was that we could at least try to do something. I think this is a painful still, but a start.
Ten.
Clarification, Ms. Taylor?
As it relates to the win or lose per Mr. Born's motion, the ten teachers lost would now reduce to eight teachers that would be relocating? Is that correct?
As I was saying, Mr. Born's motion, the way it was, was to move forward. So it would, out of the ten that were supposed to be moved, that would trigger only being eight moved. And then if it's inclusive of the whole recommendation, we would try to see if we had money to hire anymore for the second part. So yes, it would only relegate it to eight people being moved.
Okay, and then the thirty-one that would be gained, is that...
Well, we wouldn't get thirty-one because we don't have space.
How many would be gained?
If you, if you look at one and two together, you had roughly the potential for eleven and eight, probably nineteen.
Okay, so it was...
Eleven new, potentially, and eight reassigned. So that's roughly what it would impact.
Nineteen, okay. And the federal funds that would come in as a result of these changes would be money spent district-wide? Or would it be allocated to certain schools based on their ability to meet the requirements or mandates?
Each school gets a potential value, but until they do the analysis, you don't know the end result. But then that money is used to buy those teachers, if we bought new teachers, or to support the teacher that went to that school. We got eleven new teachers, and say we got eleven, it's seven hundred and seventy thousand. We're gonna get some of the money back to offset that from the state.
But would Carey be excluded from that list because they reduced and didn't meet the required federal mandate?
Carey, at the time, was only eligible for about $60,000. So in essence, we spent more than that by holding them harmless. We're foregoing potential of $140,000 with some reimbursement. So they wouldn't get any additional money. They just get to keep the two teachers.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Okay, Madam Clerk, restate the motion.
The motion made by Mr. Born is to continue leveling as recommended by the superintendent, except that we apply most recent free lunch percent at John B. Carey Elementary, which requires moving two teachers, and that was seconded by Ms. Gray. Mr. Sturdeman?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Born?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
No.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps? Mrs. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes eight, one. The next item on the agenda is 4.02, receive an update on transportation.
Let me take a two-minute recess, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk.
Oh, it's on, did you load it all?
I'm sorry.
Oh, you already loaded it.
What's your name, Dr.?
Nevermind. He loaded it in.
How are you? So eight teachers at sixteen schools, four of them losing, twelve of them good. What number is it? Change is families, you're not gonna do all of them. So how many schools total is it? Yeah, I understand. Yeah, I totally, I totally lost.
No, the number of schools hasn't changed. So it has a potential, sixteen schools, potential being involved. Twelve schools who needed teachers. Four who were slated to lose. So the four are still gonna lose some teachers.
Okay.
But this changed, though, the way they adopted it. Because, so they don't have the rule for them. So that means eight schools potentially actually saved that.
So eight schools in plus that job.
Yes.
Okay, so a total of twelve schools who are in need. They may provide eight additional schools. Remember, that's a... Yeah, well, we're not even getting into that today. So...
That's why I said potential.
Yeah, one more time. So total of... Yeah, one more time. So total of eight teachers are moving from four schools to eight schools.
What are they?
That's just the downfall. I mean, man, y'all my life. We have a good team like this.
Rob Rock. Harvard. Fisher.
A minute.
Green. Jones.
You go, you bit your foot. She'll be able to roll.
Put your auditor access to many of them.
Somebody block that. Somebody block shit. No, nobody's gonna say. It's a disgrace, scum of the earth. No, we gave two teachers back and we cost ourselves $300,000. But you, you in the middle of it, you had it, you had it. I'm paying to the fire, buddy. Oh, yeah.
Would that little, little change affect your mouth?
You need to win, buddy. I'm gonna need it. Hey, you need to win. How much is that? And tonight, the damage is half an hour. Basically, we made a motion, we voted to. 20 minutes of talking about.
I'm tired, I'm tired, man.
Ladies always out there at the next meeting. Oh, yeah. Hey, you got. But see, like, like. We moving along. When it hits. This, this thing. It's gonna take you out. Look. It shows you, you know that. Man, there's nothing else. Oh, they're really citizens, too, really, they understand.
Right.
That's why amateur boards. I don't, I don't understand. I'm sure they don't understand, at least at one level.
All right. Madam Clerk? If you could, colleagues, if you can hear my voice. I don't see any of you.
Where'd it go?
What you get is, what you, he asked you to call him? He asked you to call him? Huh? How easy we got him? Mm-hmm. How quick you want to do this? Look how many buses we got. 118.
Anybody else back?
94. So those should be fine.
Nobody back there.
Well, what we should be doing, we should be making.
Only thing we open back there is the bathroom.
That's the part that make, making sense. Yeah. I understand, but I mean, your book. We got 174 drivers. Now, 36 are special needs, here, break that out. But about 118, and it's with special needs.
Ms. Mohammed? Who else is up there?
I've seen, we got 135, actually, 12. Did you see what they got? No, she said they got 130. Did you see what I'm saying? Now, here's the problem. But I mean, we should go make that. That's the part that I don't know. Well, right here, don't mention. But now, look at how many we got, 33 of that. If we didn't have that, we're close. You see what I'm saying? But we said they could too. We said they could. Well, but. Well, there might be 15 minutes. But I mean, the 15 minutes does, there's more on the back end than it does on the front end. The only problem is, that has a domino effect.
Oh, no, 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 no. Miss, 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 y'all not, hello, y'all too, y'all too. Y'all not paying attention. You went over there.
What?
Yeah, yeah, I'm pretty sure I, I couldn't. I was trying to forget.
Well, I'm at 45. If the middle school were to be late, and if we went out.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could we reconvene here, please? Colleagues, if you hear my voice, could you take your seats?
The item we were on is 4.02, and it's to receive an update on transportation.
Mr. Chairman, other members of the school board. The biggest issue that transportation's having today is basically their buses are running late. We right now run on, you know that we run a three-tier system. Tier one, we're running 118 buses. Tier two, we're running 94 buses, and tier three, we're running 198 buses, of which 33 are pre-K buses. And that's an increase from a year ago. Why are we running late? Well, neighborhood stops for specialty schools. That's the number one thing that has caused transportation to be late, not just this year, but last year and the years before. Over time, the specialty schools were set up where the out-of-zone students were not going to be provided transportation. Then they were going to be provided hubs, and then over time, they became neighborhood stops. And each time a bus stops, the minimum time it takes to get to the stop, stop and come back is a minute on the low end, it's two minutes on the high end. So each stop will cost a substantial sum of money. Out-of-zone transportation. We have to provide transportation out-of-zone to meet federal and state regulations where the services that are being provided are at a school other than the student's zone school, as well as administrative placements that take place. This right here is probably the number one phone call we get from parents. Students go out-of-zone, they see a bus picking up. Students that aren't qualified to be on that bus get on the bus. They ride the bus, and then all of a sudden, the year we change things, the bus isn't there. And then it becomes, well, you've always provided transportation. We weren't supposed to provide transportation. And that's our number one complaint. And then we also have the schools delaying the release of buses. The other day, I'm at a middle school, and that middle school didn't release the buses until 3:40. They were supposed to have been released at 3:20 to 3:25. That 15 minutes all of a sudden makes real time. What's causing it, it becomes those specialty schools is where you can see the size of the district. A Jefferson, and then we're picking up across the board. A community, we're picking up across the board and moving assets from one side of the district to the other. What we did with Thompson and Elkhart, Elkhart and Thompson's student count are sitting right here and right here. Now we're moving those students all the way up here to Thompson each day. So how do we really solve this? If we were to go with hub stops instead of neighborhood stops, you can see, we would save 14 buses. Those 14 buses then are available to run on tier two. On tier two, which is Brown Middle, we would pick up an additional four buses, getting us to savings of 18 buses. Those buses then are available on tier three. And tier three, which is the elementary school, is where we're having our biggest situation because buses that are slow, for whatever reason, on tier one or tier two, it's a trickle-down effect to tier three. Now, if we were to go to a hub system and transport all of our out-of-zone students, which a board member's asked me to consider and to study during this upcoming year, and we gladly will study it and see if there's a way we can do it better than what we do it today. But of the high schools, and the numbers that are shown there do not include special schools. So it doesn't include community, it doesn't include Jefferson, it doesn't include Franklin Military, it doesn't include Maggie Walker, it doesn't include Brown, and it doesn't include Benford, because those are currently set up on some type of hub or neighborhood stops. There's 3,220 students that are out-of-zone going to a different school. That's 17% of the population. If we were to transport 90% of those students, assuming a $13 per hour rate on a bus driver and a benefit factor of 40%, our cost would be $1,123,000 per year. It would include 33 new drivers. So is it doable? Yes. For money and drivers. The number one challenge we have to finding new routes and putting new buses on routes, to be honest with you, is the competition for drivers. Every one of our surrounding counties' school systems are short of drivers, more so than we are. Routes in some of the surrounding counties are over two hours, both in the morning and in the afternoon. Routes are running with children four to a seat. Routes are running with children sitting on the floor of the bus. Everybody right now is facing the same challenges that Richmond faces. The things that's causing the bus driver shortage is this. The commercial trucking companies are paying a significantly higher rate. Our average rate is $15 an hour. A commercial trucking company's paying $22 to $25 an hour. Greyhound, Greyhound's offering some significant rates right now. And so the competition from the third-party providers are causing an impact to all of the bus, all the bus school districts in the surrounding Richmond area. Not just Richmond, all of us right now are struggling with this exact same issue. So that gives you a quick update on transportation.
Dr. Jones?
So being that we're all dealing with some of the same issues, are any of our neighbors considering this same solution? Or is this something that is uncommon, or just something that we're thinking about doing?
Actually, our, our neighbors are implementing this solution before we did. Our neighbors didn't go to neighborhood stops. They didn't go to the door-to-door stops. Our, our surrounding districts went more to a hub type, in many instances, hub-type stops.
So you're saying that Chesfield and Reckor are not going to, they're not going to neighborhoods right now?
In most cases, no. In most cases, no.
Okay.
Mr. Sebs?
Mr. Krantz, when you say out-of-zone students, are you referring to the open enrollment students?
I'm referring to any student who is not in that zone. So for example, if I'm Armstrong, and I go and I attend there from Jefferson, then I would be an out-of-zone student.
Okay. Well, and I'm looking at this, on this page where it says the out-of-school, that page. At the bottom of it.
The previous page?
The previous page.
Right.
At the bottom of it, it has a note that says the figures do not include those schools where transportation out-of-zone is already being provided.
Right, and that's Jefferson, Community, Franklin, Maggie Walker, which we don't include, Benford and Brown. Because we're already under those programs doing out-of-zone.
And do they, when we do the out-of-zone for those programs, do they come with a pocket of money for the, for us to provide that transportation?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Let, let me give you an example on, two examples on out-of-zone. Brown Middle School has a bus that, and I think it's bus 305, that runs the longest, runs about an hour and 20 to an hour and 30 minutes. If that bus went to a true hub system, true hubs, I would reduce the time to 45 minutes. Now, here's the negative to a hub. Oh, I can't get my child to the hub point. So now I want to create another stop. And that's what got us into the situation we are today. Because once we open the box and we have one exception, then we create a second exception, a third exception, and so forth. So if we go to a true hub, and we've had a plan for 305 for over a week, but as we communicated to the school principal, it's either all or none. We can't do parts and pieces. We have to do it all, or we do none of it. Because if we try to be, you know, a little pregnant, it just ain't going to work. We won't, we have enough problems, you know, with our routes. If we have to do that, I think we will be opening Pandora's Box and creating a lot more problems with our routing system.
And did you consider that with this hub system, would we have an opportunity to go ahead and also include our open enrollment students?
Well, that is primarily, the majority of those students are ones that are in your open, are open enrollment students.
So i-if we went to a hub system, while it may not be as attractive to some folks who are already getting transportation, it provides an opportunity for those who are not getting transportation to get transportation?
It would right now require us to, to, if we were to invest in a hub without changing, looking at all the routes, which we would have to do, it would cost us right at $1.12 million. And that's on an annual basis. That's 33 drivers and the related changes. It's 11 on tier one, an additional one on tier two, and 21 additional on tier threes, for the total of 33 drivers.
Off the top of your head, can you tell us, can you come up with the figure of students who are in open enrollment who are not getting transportation?
We got that off of, well, none of these students should be on a bus. None of those students right there should be on a bus. But as we've had the discussion with the parents from George With Zone who are going to Ugonah, for years, we had a bus picking up a set of students who by law needed to. be transported to Ugonah because the services weren't offered at With, they were offered at Ugonah. Students who were not entitled to ride the bus jumped on the bus because there was empty seats. This year, there's not a bus picking them up, we're using a private carrier because of the challenges we have. Because it's a private carrier, now that select group of parents have said, wait, you've taken away transportation. The problem with that argument is, they never were entitled to transportation. Because open enrollment students are not entitled to transportation. So under this, the majority of the students shown there, the 3,220 students are open
Just last follow-up, last follow-up, please, 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 Mr. Coleman. Mr. Krantz, when I hear you say things like never entitled and not qualified, it's concerning for me because I think that sets up that the parents that are contacting me are saying, what do you mean? My children aren't worthy to get on these buses? By law, we have to send these children to school. It's my understanding that the state funds us based on our enrollment. So if we say, listen, we got 24,000 students, they say, okay, here's a check to transport those 24,000 students. That in essence, it is this local board that has made the decision, the kind of distinct...
The state, the state funding is based off of your zone. This board, many years before me, said, open enrollment, we would not provide transportation.
But we do it for specialty schools?
But we, we, the specialty schools, the board decision that said, on those schools, and oh, by the way, we're supposed to do a hub, not neighborhood stops. So a hub would be, as the hubs were supposed to be, our elementary schools. But I can tell you, the thing that will come up the minute we go to straight elementary schools will be, it's too far. And then it becomes, I want an exception here. And then that exception becomes the second exception. I would love to transport every child. I would love to have more buses and more drivers. This isn't a matter of, you know, transportation right now costs this district $3 million a year over its budget. And that's been true for the last five years that I've looked at it. I think that's true, Ralph, at least five. That overage is because Richmond Public Schools and the board has offered transportation services above and beyond what we get funded for. Neighborhood stops. Bringing children home from practices. Field trips. The midday runs, the after, you know, when we take the children home from the after-school But that's a $3 million hit to the general purpose fund.
Okay, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz, Mr. Miles. You may not be done with your presentation, in which case, I'm sorry, but was there a proposed solution to, there were a couple of parents who came out tonight and talked about their kids being on the bus for hour and a half in the morning, hour and a half in the afternoon. Is that part of the presentation or is there a...
We gave, we gave to that particular principal a solution, which is a true hub system, which would reduce that time by 50%. But as we said, we got to do it all or nothing. And, and, you know, from our, from our standpoint, from a transportation standpoint, we can do either way, but to try to give, and I'm going to open up Pandora's Box with what I'm going to say. We as a district have provided services to students in an inconsistent manner. We can't continue to do that. Either we need to be consistent and do for all, or go to models that we can do for all but within that, you know what I'm saying, that model. I hope that answered the question. But yes, sir, we can do it.
Ms. Muhammad.
Thank you all so much for the information and the presentation. I don't have, I fully understand what you're saying, where you're going, what you're trying to encourage us to do. I, I think for us as a board, we're going to have to decide what we're going to stick with, what we're going to model through the Transportation Department, and if we're going to stick with that or not. It is very critical that, I believe, when our Transportation Director via our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Krantz, has designated or directed or given information to our principals that speaks to what you just said, they're going to have to follow what is being implemented. One of the issues that we struggle with is that we have buildings doing different things for different families. And that pins, if you will, board members against each other. Not on purpose, but it happens. So I, I would challenge the superintendent to ensure that he works with his directors to make sure that, and I'm not saying the communication, Dr. Benton, is not already being shared, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying what I just heard, Mr. Krantz says, is alarming to me if something was given to a building principal and it hasn't been implemented yet. That's a concern for me as a board member.
Well, and I don't want to take it where the building principal wasn't doing the right thing. We gave, he had a route that shows an hour and 20 to an hour and 30 minutes. We gave him a solution that we can cut it, but as we discussed with him, it needs to be, and you, you know, because the school year has started, and we're presenting this for informational purposes tonight, you're not going to, I don't, I mean, you can do as a board with, you know, anything, but it would be a challenge to change this in midstream for us, okay, even quickly. So this is something more for the 2016, 2017 school year than it is, but we have an opportunity on this one route to do it. We have an opportunity to show what it can do. He agrees with us, he's behind us 100%, but it needs to be one where all of the parents are behind us on that bus and not 50% or 60% or whatever that percentage is.
So, so, Dr. Benton, is that something that you think you can, you know, work through with our executive director? It's not just a secondary level issue, it's, it's a district-wide issue, right? Elementary and, and secondary. Is it something that you, okay, thank you.
Great.
Have we produced similar plans for Community, Franklin, any of the other specialty schools?
Yes, we've done it on a limited basis. We haven't taken every single bus, but where we have buses that are continually the ones that are struggling to get on to the next tier, where we can make a change is through the hub system. And we've done that.
And I've heard from parents who are really more in favor of hub, because several parents, you know, at the far reaches of the city are having to drive their child to school because they don't want to leave them at the bus stop and they're the only child there. You know, they're so spread out. And a hub system typically is safer because you've got a large number of students. You typically will have parents with their cars running, you know, when it's cold, children pile into the cars, I've done it as a parent. And then you, you wait for the bus, but you're not leaving your child out in the dark and in the cold alone at a stop. So, you know, I've heard from multiple parents who are in favor of it, and, you know, there may be some that need the door to door or want the door to door. I'd like to find solutions for those who absolutely can't get to a hub, but, you know, if, if we're leaving kids out on corners for extended periods of time...
We don't, we don't mean to, and our, the biggest, the biggest challenge we have is in the afternoon. It's not as much in the morning, okay?
Right.
The biggest complaint we have in the morning is where some of the routes are long. In the afternoon, it's more a function of how fast can we get from our high schools, get the children on the bus, get to our stops, get to our middle schools, get the children on the bus, and then get to our elementary schools. That's the one that we're struggling. Southampton, for example, it's our schools that are specially run buses. We were, Floyd and I have spent a day out there, were there the afternoon to watch our buses run, talk to the PE teacher who monitors the buses at that particular school. And, and we saw the three buses out of the seven that are coming in at 4:15 to 4:20 timeframe. That particular day, we watched the bus drive in about 4:30. It was a bus that we saw at Thompson and it didn't get released from Thompson until about 3:55. And we were, we were both there at Thompson, so I saw it. It's those kind of backups that take place that's not, you know, Thompson, it, it wasn't a problem at Thompson because the building principal said, I'm not going to release the students. It was, they had some safety issues with their intercom system. It hadn't got up to, to my level. We addressed it as soon as it was, we were there. It took us about three days before we could get it fixed, and I think that speed has sped up the process of getting them released. But it's looking at it school by school, route by route, and, and getting it cleaned up.
Can we begin to survey families at the specialty schools and whether or not they have a preference to do a hub system? Because overwhelmingly, the parents who have called me are in favor of doing hubs.
We can do that. Mr. Morris at Lucille Brown has done that. He did a survey, and it was my understanding, when we gave him the revised route, he was going to kind of update that survey just to see if people were behind it, so.
Yeah, and it's better to do it early because parents who don't have the transportation need other parents to network to get their kids to those bus stops. And, and it's, it worked for me for many years with five kids going to four separate schools, you know, and trying to get everybody where they needed to be in time for those buses, so.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Krantz.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
The next item is item five, budgetary items. Receive the financial statement for the month ended September 30th, 2015.
Good evening. You received on board docs today the financial report for the month ended September 30th, 2015. We provided our normal listing of reports, a revenue summary, expenditures by state function, object classification expenditures, capital improvement reports, as well as a summary of expenditures for all funds. We did mention some highlights, some areas that we are monitoring closely because they are already in a deficit, either due to unexpected increases or just inadequate areas of budget. One of those would be, as Mr. Krantz mentioned, our transportation non-contracted drivers. Are there questions specific to the financial report that we could answer for you tonight?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Muhammad.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk.
The next item is 5.02, receive the financial statements for Patrick Henry School of Arts and Sciences.
Hello, I'm Rebecca Quarles, Treasurer at Patrick Henry. I'm here to share the first quarter financials with you. As you can see on our balance sheet, we have restricted assets in the amount of $55,765. We have cash in the amount of $70,728, which more than covers our restricted assets. And that's all I have to report unless anyone has any questions on these financials.
Any comments, Mr. Westby? Oh, okay. Questions? Right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And in the future, yeah, always contact me when you come in a room and see a whole lot of people like that, because we may could have moved you up a little bit. It's my oversight.
Okay.
Thank you. Have a good night, okay?
It has been a pleasure.
All right, Madam Clerk.
The next item is item six, your board action items. 6.01, receive for action the recommendation of the administration on the Metropolitan
Thomas, Dr. Boyd.
Back at our last meeting, the last time we considered the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy, there was basically five things that were needed between that meeting and on October 1st. One was secure sufficient facility as evidenced by submitting a lease or purchase agreement. Two, a reasonable timeline for renovations. Three, evidence of financial backing to make the renovations. Four, a detailed plan and related finances for executing exceptional education services. And five, a detailed plan and related finances for transportation. We've received additional information from Ms. Bingham. She's here this evening. I know the hour is late. However, she would like to, five minutes, Ms. Bingham? To kind of address some of the questions. However, from Ms. Boyd and my position, we've reviewed the documentation that we've been given to date, and essentially, at this point in time, there's two deficiencies. One, there isn't a site plan. Now, it's my understanding maybe in the PowerPoint there is. A site plan is defined to include the Oak Grove site, because that's the site they want to do, the building, the parking lot, and where the modular buildings that they're proposing for years, years one through three would be located. Number two, they would need a term sheet, and she did, Ms. Bingham did submit a revised site plan book or packet. In that, in year four, her intent is, as enrollment grows, would be to demolish Oak Grove and put additional modular buildings on site. So the modular buildings would become permanent buildings, is in essence what she's proposed. And number three, there's not any evidence that, of the ability to fund the obligations. There's a budget, and the budget clearly shows revenues, and it clearly shows expenses, and it clearly shows that revenues exceed expenses. However, from Ms. Boyd's position and from my position, there isn't something that actually shows the ability to pay the cash when the cash is due. And I think Ms. Bingham has tried to address that, it's my understanding in the PowerPoint, but in what we've seen, we've not. So as a result of that, Mrs. Boyd and myself would recommend that we don't continue with the charter process at this time.
All right, Mr. Krantz. On the board, is there any desire to see Ms. Bingham's presentation? Yes, Mr. Eller, is that for you? Yes. Yes, okay, okay. Five minutes? Okay, Bingham.
All right, Tony, you know. You got everything.
Ben's going to help me. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. It was our understanding that we were coming here this evening to follow up, oh, yeah. I usually, yes, that we were coming here this evening to present to the board, based on the August 3rd meeting, a more detailed site plan. At that meeting, we, the task was to present plans for transportation, which we did. We presented a detailed transportation plan with an M.O.U. from the transportation provider, a draft M.O.U., satisfying the transportation request. We also presented a plan for exceptional education services, satisfying that request. And since the meeting, we've received no other questions related to special education-related services, and it was our understanding that Michelle was, had reviewed everything and was on board with the special education-related services plan. And so if there are other questions, I'd love to address those this evening with regard to special education-related services. You can actually go through. And then, site plan. So one of the things that we, one of the key things we'd like to do tonight is to talk more about the site plan. If you could just scroll down, Ben. Actually, so that we won't have to go back to the screen, let me stop here. A fourth requirement was enrollment. This requirement wasn't actually due to be met until March 3rd in the original conditions, four conditions that were set by the board. We've already started work on this. We are at 7% right now of the enrollment goal, which is 90%. By March 3rd, we were supposed to have evidence of 90%, equivalent to 90% of the total enrollment, which would be 90 boys. We have a plan in place to, with the schools, that we did, we designed in conjunction with R.P.S. Communication Services and a couple of area principals and school counselors. And we've implemented that at, we've begun to implement it at Carver and also at, we've met with two Southside schools. So the plan base, for enrollment basically is to do a principal-parent link message at each school, to hang banners in each elementary school, advertising our new program, and to have school counselors identify, target fifth-grade students, and to do a parents' night, and then to do a parents' night in the four quadrants, on the east end, the west end, south side, north side. We already planned the parents' night for Southside, it's to be held at the Blackwell Community Center. We did that in conjunction with Blackwell and the community center, and have also met with Westover Hills about that, and they're very interested in sending parents over to that. So we're going to do that at every location. That's enrollment. Regarding site plan, of course, you all know we're focused on Oak Grove. It's a five-acre site. This is the site as it exists now. The plan is to do Oak Grove in three phases. Phase one would involve the building out the lower school, the first phase of the lower school, which would include three buildings, an education building, a cafeteria building, and an assembly building. Phase two would add to the lower school a two-story building that would house seventh and eighth, or house classrooms for seventh and eighth graders. And then phase three would be to raise the existing structure and to place an upper school. We've contracted ModSpace Incorporated to do modular construction at the site, and this is an example of what some of their modular construction would look like for another charter school in New Jersey. And you have to actually go back up, go back down, and actually, can you, on the side of the page, kind of go up? You know how to scroll up this, not go up. You should be able to scroll. This is what you've been to do. On the side, you can usually.
That's the way.
Oh, no. Oh, no, hold on. I can do it on the computer. Oh, no. Can you get back there for me? Okay, well, unfortunately, we can't draw this page down, but essentially, you see the, you see the three green boxes there and the orange box at the top. That, this is a Google Maps shot of the Oak Grove campus. The building is to the right. Unfortunately, it's there, but for some reason, we can't scroll down here. And over to the left, there are about three acres, three additional acres. The classroom building is the one, this is facing Ingram, so Ingram Avenue is at the top, and the first building is the classroom building that we were discussing for the lower school. The next building, the yellow one next to it, would be the two-story classroom building for seventh and eighth graders that would be built in the second phase. So the first green classroom building is for sixth graders. And then, and then the, and then the other two buildings are the cafeteria and other building. This is another drawing of the site that was done by ModSpace. The existing building is not, is up top. It's not drawn there, and this is in the free grounds. So this is how the four other buildings would be situated. I can give you additional, I can give you cost information, but essentially, where we are is we have completed the requirements for the four conditions. Those were the four conditions that were, that were given to us. And what we'd like to do now is to make a request that the board approve, give us, grant us full approval for the charter, and then allow us the time, the space, to use that full approval to aggressively pursue our funding objectives. That's typically what happens with a charter school, and it's because we haven't had full approval that we have not been able to aggressively pursue our funding objectives. So we need the full approval. Give us the full approval. Once you give us the full approval, then we will be able to fully approve or aggressively pursue funding objectives. We've already started. There is. Time. I think I'll save you some time if you give me a few more minutes. We.
Hold on one second.
Yes.
Okay. The board, would you want to hear the rest of it? You say yes? Yes, yes. Okay, you could finalize this. Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Bingham.
Okay. So we've, we've put together a timetable, or extended our timetable with very clear financial objectives added in, and those financial objectives are based on the cash flow needs for the project. Right now, those financial objectives that are in the timetable include, for example, the construction deadlines, and take those into mind, and cash flow objectives that are tied to capacity building. We have also been laying the ground for capital campaign, and just in terms of finance in general, one of the board, one of the concerns that Tommy had raised, though it wasn't one of the conditions, it wasn't one of the four conditions, one of the concerns that he raised was our capacity to, you know, plan for raising this money. And so we, the first thing that we've done is we've put in place a project development agreement with our builder. And what that's going to allow us to do is to more easily manage the upfront design costs. So rather than have to lay out money for surveys and that kind of thing, the construction company will advance that, those funds for us, and then we are setting up an installment plan with the, with the construction company, with ModSpace, to, so that we can have, you know, equal payments, rather than have to advance all that money upfront. The other thing that we're going to do is launch our capital campaign. To launch our capital campaign, what we've been waiting for is full approval. We cannot launch a capital campaign without full approval.
Okay, thank you.
We've set up an alliance of backers, which includes a huge, a huge anchor backer, one of the largest congregations, one of the largest churches in this area, St. Paul's Baptist Church. Reverend Lance Watson has agreed to help us, and actually, we're meeting with him later this week, has agreed to help us put together an alliance of backers that will include fraternal organizations that have missions that are aligned, youth development missions that are aligned to ours. And we've also reached, we, in a grant competition that we were invited to for a half-million-dollar grant, we made the top 20 in that competition. That grant would fund in January, and so we're in a great place. We're actually going to know within a couple of weeks how we stand with respect to that grant. That's a half-million dollars. That is four times what we're going to need between now and March to meet our construction, construction objectives, just that one grant alone. And so we, and we have other grant opportunities that we've been invited to. People have actually spoken with their boards about our project, one grant fund in particular, and we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Okay.
So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Mohammed?
Are we, I see that to receive for action, I would like to make a motion that we table this until our December meeting.
Discussion? Ms. Taylor, Ms. Taylor's hand was up. Yeah. Mr. Sturtevant, that was a second, correct? Okay. What was the second, when they were in discussion, Ms. Taylor?
I can't hear.
Speaking to the mic.
I just wanted to make a second motion.
Well, yeah, okay.
That's why I was raising my hand.
You have to wait. We have a motion on the, motion on the floor. Move the second to table to December. All right, Mr. Born, followed by Ms. Gray.
I certainly appreciate the desire to kind of wait. I'm not sure what we get by waiting. What I envisioned with a site plan is not what I saw here. And I, one of my, as you remember, one of my big things was the financial stability of the charter, in addition to what financial impact it had on the district, because obviously we, we would be in this together, right? So has, Mr. Westbay, or have any of the concerns, are costs gone down, or is there any greater comfort level that you guys have from being our number crunchers that, that we can sustain this? Because as I said to the police chief, I don't want to start something great and then two years from now have to shut it down because of finances. So I'd like to hear from Mr. Westbay. Or Tommy, or Dr. Boyd, or whomever the right person is. That's my first question, Mr. Chairman.
We don't have anything more up to date to offer than we've discussed previously.
Okay.
I was going to say, Mr. Born, if I might add, I know we provided you all with a summary late in the evening, and we do apologize for that. First, I do want to commend Ms. Bingham. I think she and her team have worked diligently, and they have good ideas. My reluctance here is that, as we talked about compliance and things like that, the financial stability to support special education for the number of students with disabilities who will potentially be enrolled in the school is not there. As we know, Richmond City is about 18% students with disabilities. Based on the target population that Metropolitan Preparatory Academy seeks to garner, it's a high probability that they'll have a much higher percentages of students with disabilities based on their population. If we look at our current data for MLK, MLK is 30% special ed, Armstrong is 30% special ed, Aspire is 50% special ed. So based on those specific characteristics, we can anticipate that 30 to 50 students with disabilities would be enrolled in Metropolitan Preparatory Academy. In the paper that you have in front of you, in short, and I'll be brief, we could have to have anywhere between four and six special education teachers for caseload compliance for Preparatory Academy, in addition to the content area teachers there. Based on the salaries and benefits package that was listed in the budget, it does not appear at this time that with the estimated projections, we will be able to support those students with disabilities. And then there's more concerns about the wraparound services if students require behavioral aids. And there are some different scenarios that are presented in your packet. Again, it's not a, as we shared in the packet, we have to go on with what could be the worst-case scenario, because these are just basic compliance things that don't even touch instruction. And because of Virginia Charter law, if we go wrong here, R.P.S., we're going to have to absorb those costs. So if they can't afford a behavioral aid, we'll have to provide that. If they can't afford a special ed teacher, we'll have to provide that. And we're already torn financially, based on some of the preliminary discussions we had this evening with leveling. So again, we certainly understand your concern, we understand your passion, but we had to look very, very carefully at the numbers to make sure students with disabilities can get those services at the worst-case scenario. And right now, it just doesn't appear that those finances are stable and solidified to ensure us that that would be able to take place.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Follow-up question. Dr. Boyd, Ms. Bingham represented that you've signed off or approved of the special ed plan. Is that, is this just a simple yes or no question? I just want to.
No, sir.
You have not?
I have not.
From a substantive standpoint, not a financial, or is?
From a substantive standpoint, it doesn't look like there's a resources in place to be in compliance with Virginia requirements.
Okay. So there was a financial impact, and then the ability to raise funds, and I hear the plan and the capital campaign, and that was sort of the same message that we got last time. And I just wonder when we'll see, you know, some commitments. But, and I see you mouthing full approval, but the last time we talked, it was just give me conditional approval, and I can go out and get some commitments. And, and, and so that's why I'm asking, one, and then on the site plan and financing of the construction, Tommy, Mr. Krantz, excuse me, I'm sorry. Was there a document that had sources and uses or anything like that on it that?
There was a rough budget that they prepared. Again, the challenge that's there is a couple of things. One, is a city going to accept modular building as a permanent building, and what will be the cost of that? If you recall, in 1995, the city said, "School system, no more modular portable buildings on site." So there may be some additional costs that none of us are anticipating, because we just haven't had to deal with it. Number two, just now putting the CPA hat on me, I can put numbers on a piece of paper and make them sing any which way you want to. If not, I wouldn't be a very good CPA and all the other designations I've got behind my name. So it gets down to, what's the confidence level that I have that there's the cash on hand to meet the financial obligation to do the renovation that's here? There's $350,000 of installation costs. Yeah, there's a budget, but that, to me, is not evidence that they really could write that check, because they don't miss, today, I've not seen anything that says they have the wherewithal to write a check for $350,000. Now, they don't need to write that check today, but, you know, once you start this process, the bills start coming in, you're incurring them, and they're being incurred quick. And it's not, we went on the two portables that we did at Broad Rock and Green, you know, we went from a million dollars to a million two, like that. And that was just to get them open. So it's not difficult, when you begin this process, to encounter unexpected events, and you can't slow it down if you're going to open school by September on a tight timeline.
Thank you. Mr. Born, have any more time?
53 seconds.
Okay. This, this question is probably more for the attorney. This, this question is probably more for the attorney. One of the other concerns I had is whether or not, or how do we address the parity issue, the equity issue for opportunities for our female students? And so, because I wouldn't want to do anything that would invite a lawsuit, although we seem to do that just about every meeting, but.
Okay. Excuse me. Who's this for? Just a moment. Sorry for that. Basically, and I don't know if all board members recall, the, I sent a memorandum out regarding some questions of constitutionality that may, this was some time ago. Okay. All right. And basically, the summary of that was that, of course, the law does provide in Virginia the opportunity to have single-sex classes or schools. However, opportunities for coeducational, substantially similar coeducational or single-sex opportunities have to be provided to withstand challenges. And again, it doesn't have to be single-sex, but it has to be a coeducational opportunity that is substantially similar to the program that is being offered through the proposed charter school. And as you recall, or may recall, in that memorandum, there were, I guess, there was a summary of what substantially similar means as far as what the courts would interpret as substantially similar. And they're looking at things like curriculum, they're looking at things like qualifications of staff members, et cetera. Loosely, not necessarily loosely, but I also cited to the VMI case where a lot of that is drawn from. So, basically, the bottom line is that the administration would have to either identify or create other opportunities, identify current opportunities if they exist for a coeducational program at the minimum that is substantially similar to that of Metropolitan. Or create, and again, subject to, you know, it would be subject to challenge, but create an opportunity that's substantially similar for a coeducational at minimum opportunity. Does that answer the question? Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Gray?
Just a couple of questions. One, for our attorney, because you brought up staffing and other issues. Do they have to meet the same code requirements, the moral turpitude and other requirements that are in the state code for hiring?
I'd like to mention first off, and maybe this, we have not yet entered a charter stage where as far as writing all of that information into the charter contract, they can be employees of this division, they can be employees of the charter school. All of that has yet to be fleshed out as far as the charter process is concerned. And so, that determination has yet to be made. And that's one of the points where if they're, if the board grants its full condition, excuse me, full approval, the next stage would be drafting that charter agreement where we go back and forth to set those terms. How long the charter is going to be? Whose employees are the employees going to be? What rules are they going to follow, et cetera?
So, my question is, how much cash on hand do you have? How much have you raised to date? What, our definition of a site plan is extremely different from what I saw here. When, when we get site work done, it's an architect, it's got engineering stamps. You look at grade levels, you look at where are you going to put your plumbing, your electrical, how, how it's going to impact the community around it with, you know, what you're putting in. So, what, where did, as far as the site plan, it looks like a Google map that someone drew on and highlighted boxes.
Okay. A couple of things. I'll address them first and then go around.
In the mic, Ms. Bingham.
You can speak in the mic, Ms. Bingham.
Site plan. I took direction from Tommy Krantz about what to do in terms of site plan, and he said to us simply at this stage, to meet the board standard for this meeting, what we needed was a shot of the school campus that showed the existing building relative to the, the modular buildings. And so, that's what that drawing, there were two drawings there. One done by ModSpace that just didn't include the existing building, and then the other did include a shot of, you know, was a screenshot, showed the existing building and the four new modular buildings. And so, that was the instruction that came to us from Tommy Krantz. Now, at the next stage, we can provide the more detailed site plan. That's what, when I mentioned that project development agreement, that's where we bring in soil surveyors, you know, we, to get topographical, you know, topographical study done, get a survey done. We're encountering, you know, thousands of dollars of costs, and that's after we get a full approval. Because we're going to start that study, that part, that phase, that design phase is going to cost us $40,000. So, that's the type of thing we need full approval for. We have the agreement in place for ModSpace. So, we have an agreement in place. We just need to move on it.
Just to take that one step further.
Mm-hmm.
Spend the $40,000, we get full approval, and they come back and say, "This is not a site that will be suitable for these modular units." Then what?
They've already determined that it's suitable for the modular units. And by-
How can they do that without the soil samples, without the engineering work? I mean-
They, they actually, they, they did it in, we're already working with permits and zoning. And so, we actually already have feedback from the permits and zoning people. We already have, actually tomorrow, we have a site visit at, for electrical hookup, no, tomorrow, Wednesday, site visit for electrical hookup. We're already discussing gas hookups. We've, we've really been moving. And so, and so, and so, and ModSpace has already been over to the site. We had Tommy okay that.
Do you currently today have an engineer that says this can happen?
Right. The ModSpace, the ModSpace team is composed, is a, is a multi-discipline team that's composed of a bunch of different-
Has an engineer stamped approval on this plan?
Oh, we haven't finished the full site plan with the topographical studies and all of that stuff. But, but the ModSpace team, the experts that have been out believe that it can happen on that site.
Well, they're selling product.
A big key, a big key is the flat, is, is the level, is the level land.
ModSpace would come to my backyard and tell me I can put something there if, if they could make money off of it. So, I'm not, and I'm not-
I hear you.
Knocking ModSpace. I'm just saying, if they're selling a product, they're selling a product. Do you have an independent engineer that says?
And that's what, and that's what the next, the next stage will refine that. But we've done, I mean, these, they've done similar buildings at other, at other sites. And so, I, I think that we can, we could, we will have that refined within a couple of weeks. The other thing that I, that I want to address your, I had a couple of other questions.
Ms. Bingham, Ms. Bingham, Ms. Bingham. Did she answer your question?
Well, yeah. Well, you don't have a couple more? No, you don't. Well, my other one is, how much cash on hand does your organization have to date?
Mm-hmm.
How much have you raised to date? And how much cash on hand do you have at this moment?
We, we are low on cash on hand. We are, a, a big part of this is we don't want to raise, we didn't want to aggressively raise funds for the school without full approval because people who are giving those funds are really trying to take tax deductions. And, and we need at least a full approval to back that up with the service. We're a 501(c)(3) and we really wanted the full approval to aggressively seek those funds. And so, we have commitments from people. We've done a capital campaign, capital campaign survey. We have individual donors and organizational donors who are ready to give, and they are waiting for a full approval.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bingham.
There were a couple of other questions. If I may just quickly address the, the legal question.
Ms. Bingham, Ms. Bingham.
Yes.
Ms. Bingham.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Board members. Madam Clerk, could you read the motion, please? So, we can be clear.
The motion made by Mrs. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Mr. Sturtevant was to table action on the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy until the December meeting.
We were, we were in discussion. I want to make sure everybody know that this is the motion that we're, we're dealing with here. And Ms. Larson, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. I guess what I was looking for since we did the conditional approval, which I feel like the conditional approval was the approval that you needed to go out and raise the funds that we're talking about now, or get financing or whatever. And that's why in that motion, it says a facility plan and evidence of financial backing. So, that's what we're looking for now.
Right.
And, no, please let me finish. And so, I hear you say, "Well, the design company will let you finance it." But yeah, then how are you going to pay it off?
Mm-hmm.
And then the modular will let you finance it. And so, I'm just uncomfortable with getting into $400,000 in debt when there's, there's no pot there, there's no financing plan, there's no loan, you know, you don't have a bank that says, "Here you go, we're going to get behind this."
Mm-hmm.
And as far as this motion that we're talking about right now with the December timeframe, I think that at least when I approved this, whenever it was in March, you know, the idea was, we're giving you these months to work on this, to pull together the site plan, the site assessment, to have the engineer come in, to do all this work, and to get everything queued up to pull the trigger. To do it in December really runs on top of our budget process and makes it late to, to get into opening for next year. And so, I just have a lot of concerns now, and I feel like the conditions that we put out there have not been met.
All right. Any more discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you could restate the motion?
The motion was made by Mrs. Harris Mohammed, seconded by Mr. Sturtevant, to table action on the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy until the December meeting. Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Ms. Gray?
No.
Mr. Bourne?
Oh, wow.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes, I have to get distracted.
This is the motion to table the action on the Metropolitan Preparatory Academy until the December meeting. Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson?
No.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-4.
Okay. Mrs., Ms. Bingham?
Yes.
Once again, do you clearly understand what you need to bring back the first meeting in December?
Yes. We'll have it, we'll have it long before.
Could I give you a tip?
Yes.
There should be some money in the bank.
Okay.
Actual money in the bank. Because when someone asked that question, you said, "We're low on funds." That's not a number. Okay? That's all we got tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, okay. Ms. Larson?
Okay. I just want to mention this. You mentioned in passing that you've enrolled 7% of your, your enrollment is 7%. That concerns me because you're still on a conditional approval, and you shouldn't be, a charter agreement has not been executed, you shouldn't be enrolling. Now, having interest meetings-
That's what I mean.
-makes sense, but enrolling students, when you don't have a charter agreement in a school, I don't think you should be doing that.
I misspoke. We're not actually enrolling. We have a list of parents who've expressed interest with phone numbers-
Okay.
-and email addresses.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bingham.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. First meeting, December.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you all.
Have a great evening.
Madam Clerk?
The next item is 6.02, received for action, the Human Resources actions.
The HR actions for approval tonight include the nomination of 12 employees, the change of contract of 25 employees, the change of contract for lead security supplement of 14 employees, and the transfer of seven employees. Additionally, actions for information include the resignation of six employees, the retirement of five employees, the furlough of seven employees, and the returning from leave of one employee. In addition, you have an addendum in front of you which, which has two additional resignations on it.
Did you pass it up?
Are there questions for close?
Yes.
There are questions for close. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Madam Clerk?
The next item is item 6.04, received for action, school board travel and district activity request. I have a travel request from Miss Harris Mohammed to attend the Richmond Crusade Provost banquet. I have a request from Mrs. Pinkney Epps to renew her membership, I'm sorry, Miss Harris Mohammed's cost is $60. Request from Mrs. Pinkney Epps to renew her membership in the National Coalition of 100 Black Women for $225. And also to attend the VSBA Annual Conference with an estimated cost of $489.04. Her total estimated cost are $714.04. And I have a request from Mrs. Taylor to attend the VSBA Annual Conference. Her estimated cost is $557.87. The total estimated cost of the travel and district activities this evening is $1,329.91.
Hey, is there a motion?
So, second.
Move to second. We can't hear you, Ms. Taylor.
I just wanted to put on the record that I just received an email from George with PTA. They're trying to put a PTA back together at that location, and they want to do an outreach to the community. I have no problem with it coming up for approval later. The only problem is, is that it's going to be before our next board meeting. It's going to be on the 29th. So, I don't know. Do you have any recommendations as to how that can be facilitated until it can come before the board?
Um-
And that's next week, and we don't meet until after that.
Yeah, based on our policy at this point, come up next board.
I don't have a problem with that. I was just wondering if possibly there were any recommendations so that I wouldn't cut any corners. For example, if the school were to assist with the matter, could, would my budget, would I be allowed to use my budget to reimburse them for it, said funds?
Ms. Lilly?
It's a matter of, I'm not sure as far as finances are concerned how that works as far as the board member reimbursing the school for something that they've expended. I can't speak to that piece of it.
Is there anything that would not disqualify that or not allow that?
I really am not the person to speak to that because, I mean, I can speak to your policy that says, you know, the 21 days, but I don't know the internal process of how that money move, can move. If the school expends it and you reimburse it, that's a finance question.
Mr. West, could Mr. West, will you speak to that?
Yeah, exactly.
The question is to reimburse a school for-
The question from Ms. Taylor.
-activities that they've incurred. I'm sorry? I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
I thought I had it on. It's like a feeder interest activity meeting to-
It's like a feeder interest activity meeting to see what the interest is for school clubs, PTAs, things of that sort. So if they were to pull it from their, one of their line items, could they pay for it and then I reimburse them once this comes back before the board?
Well, it's the same, we're taking general fund monies appropriated for the operation of the school division, and then the schools raise money through, the PTAs are separate and independent of that. The schools raise money through the school activity funds, which are completely a separate operation and for the benefit of the students of those schools. I'm not sure, I'd have to look at board policy and, and investigate a little bit whether or not it's appropriate. It doesn't seem as though it is to take the board's general fund monies and donate that into an activity fund at the school level. They're two separate intents in terms of their operation.
But when, when we use our monies at the end of the year to contribute to the schools of our choice, isn't that the same difference?
Not really, because those are meant to support like the general fund activities of instruction of the division in the same way, you know, or in the same way that we're budgeting monies to support the music, athletics, instructional supplies, those kinds of things.
So when you like have a community cookout for appreciation of something, is that the same? Is still our general funds being used for those activities?
I guess so. I don't know, I'd have, I need to do a little bit of research on it, so.
Okay, well, I just wanted to put it on the record so that you weren't caught off guard.
Okay.
But that's what my...
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
You're welcome.
Okay, we need a motion?
The motion was made by Mrs. Harris Mohammed, and it was seconded by Ms. Pinkney Epps.
Okay.
To approve the...
All right, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Okay. Mr. Sturtevant? Ms. Gray?
No, I have my hand up for discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Bourne? Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson? Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes eight-one. The next item on the agenda is 6.04, received for action, a certificate recognizing school bus safety week.
Madam Clerk, would you be sure to get everyone a copy of that, please?
I will. The motion was made by Ms. Harris Mohammed, did I hear a second? Ms. Epps, thank you. Mr. Sturtevant? Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Harris Mohammed? Dr. Jones? Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
Yes.
Mrs. Larson? Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. The next item is your consent agenda, and under the consent agenda, we have minutes that are listed on the agenda September 28, 2015, October 5, 2015, and the October 12 joint School Board, City Council meeting, also to affirm the list of 2015 and the summer 2015 graduates and to receive for action budget transfers. The minutes and the graduates were on board docs, the budget transfers should have been in a packet given to you this afternoon.
I haven't either.
Have you seen them?
I haven't seen any budget transfers.
Where were all the copies? Ms. Brown, where were the copies? Did they all go up here?
I'm getting fish, turn a fish on us.
Are there any extra budget transfers in the back, back there?
Are there any, I assume there's some that we actually have to approve?
Ah, more to... All right. Ms. Gray, did you have anything? Now that you've seen them?
I'm fine with it.
Of course. All right, Madam Clerk?
The motion was made by Ms. Harris Mohammed and seconded by Dr. Jones to approve those items under the consent agenda, Mr. Sturtevant? Ms. Gray?
Yes.
Mr. Bourne?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor? Consent agenda.
Consent agenda.
And the graduates. Mrs. Harris Mohammed?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Pinkney Epps?
No.
Mrs. Larson? Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Motion passes seven-two.
I'm sorry, not yet, but they still got...
There are no other informational items, your next item is nine, new business.
New business, Ms. Epps?
Yes, I'd like to speak to the information that we received in the Friday report. The, what is it? The air quality testing that took place at J.L. Francis. I'd like for this board to consider that a meeting be held with the staff and the parents to educate them on those findings. And I need the consensus of this board to make that happen. No, this is the testing from September 1st. But I think it will go a long way in alleviating some of the concerns that are still lingering out there, because they've not gotten any feedback.
Okay, Ms. Krantz has agreed. Are we willing to do that? Thank you, Ms. Epps. Any other new business? Any other new business? Any other new business? Oh, Mr. Bourne?
This, this meeting would not be complete, and we would all be remiss, if we didn't take a moment to reflect upon someone in this room who works extremely hard for us and has done so over the winters, the summers, when air conditioning goes out, when mold starts to grow, when roofs fall in. We ought to just take a moment and honor Tommy Krantz, especially today, because it's Tommy's birthday. We should have done this a little earlier when the room was packed, but that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
A fine gesture there, Mr. Bourne. Any more new business? Any more new business? Oh, Ms. Larson, Ms. Larson?
I just wanted to mention the joint meeting that we had last Monday, and I wanted to thank Dr. Bennett and the administration, because I thought that the presentations that you all did were great. I thought we looked very professional, and you all did an excellent job of answering the questions. And as a board, I think, for those of you that weren't there, there was a lot of discussion about the mayor and his staff participating in the next meeting. And I think that it, we had that, and we had a couple other to-do items. I think it would be worth our time to put together a letter, one that we send to City Council of what we talked about and what we intend to talk about in our next meeting, and one to the mayor, just an open invitation to come to these joint meetings and that we welcome his input and hope that he or his designee would come.
Okay, do we have any consensus for the chair to draft a letter for our two counterparts for the next joint meeting?
I will only, I will only vote yes if we can adjust the time, because I'm never, I am never able to make those times.
Okay.
And I express my concern, and I just really feel like, you know, people just really don't like me or care how I feel.
No, 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 it's, it's again, we...
You're really stressed with that time.
No, no, we definitely, when we plan the next one, we will take into account, and we did this time, to try to get the majority of people, that we do understand hardworking people like yourself. Okay, Ms. Taylor?
Thank you. I would like for new business, I would like for us to start working immediately or have the administration work immediately on Black History Month. I spoke with Ms. Kane, I haven't gotten any follow-up as of yet as to how the task force is coming together. Do we have a task force? Say it again, it was in the weekly report? Okay, wonderful, this past one, though? Okay. So I'm hoping that we can put something together to make that really happen in a big way. And if we can have something sooner than later, that would be fantastic. And secondly, if we could bring to the table the redistricting process on the elementary level. I know that we have to do some work towards the secondary level per our agreement. If I remember correctly, with City Council, we said that we would have something in place by the end of the year. So if we can work towards having something put together regarding the redistricting to kind of offset that, which was a consequence of the initial 2013 rezoning, that would be fantastic.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Taylor. I did make a note of that. Madam Clerk?
The next item on the agenda is closed session, Dr. Jones has the language.
Second.
The motion was made by Dr. Jones and seconded by Ms. Pinkney Epps, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? You're now enclosed, your closed session is in your boardroom. There are a couple of lunches still in the lounge area.
Okay, we can swiftly move upstairs, please.